Hello, everyone.
Good evening, guys.
Hello.
Hey, Pam.
Hi, hi, everybody.
Zooming.
Hello, Mr. Bradshaw. How are you?
I'm very well. I hope you are.
Good.
Yeah, helps if I actually hit things up. Give Jay a minute or two here.
I had lunch at Verley's today and Charlene had Jay working hard, so he's probably wore out from doing that.
Good day.
Did Jay appear? Hey, it's Jerry. Okay. How are you, Jay?
Sorry.
Quite right. All right, so I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners for November twenty-three, two thousand and twenty. And as our custom, we'll be meeting with a moment of silence. All right. Jay, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Certainly. Would everyone rise for the pledge? Live allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. All right. The first item is adoption of the overall agenda with the change from the earlier agenda from consent item number six, the Chatham Park Master Plan Amendment moved from Consent Six to New Business Two. With that change, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. The first item then is manager updates. Chris?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. Couple of updates for us tonight. We're gonna have a few that are, I'll say, seasonal and a few that are agenda-related. So I hope everyone got a chance to log on to the tree lighting yesterday. You know, it's kind of an awkward event to do it through YouTube and virtually, but I think it was a great, you know, creative way to try to get some seasonal flair into the holiday. So a big thanks to everyone who helped put that on and everyone participated. Hopefully, it was good for for all those who partook in that. I know the the mayor had a good piece on the YouTube for his reading, reading the books. I thought that was very good and very well done. And so corresponding with that, we'll let everybody know it's it's not so public or not so cryptic or not public, but let everyone know that we are canceling the parade this year. Unfortunately, it just, the odds were stacking against us. It didn't make very good sense to try to do something. We looked at a number of alternatives, reverse parade, and it just, it was just becoming too cumbersome to try to figure out a good, safe way to have it. So unfortunately, we had to cancel that for this year. So we'll let everybody know. We're getting excited for next year's hopefully, and it'll be normal and it'd be even better. So we hate that for those folks who count so much on that and the the seasonal flair that it provides, but unfortunately, we had to cancel that for this year. We do hopefully, hope that everyone comes out this Saturday for Small Business Saturday in our downtown. I know the PBA is hosting an event. You can actually come get a passport stamped through a couple of vendors in town. There's some raffles. I will actually be partnering with the PBA and be wrapping presents on Saturday morning. So if you would like to have copious amounts of tape on your Christmas gifts, please stop by the small Small Business Saturday in the Welcome Center Saturday morning, and I'll be happy to to duly wrap your presents. Please no basketballs. Those are very cumbersome to wrap. So we're excited to have some semblance of that, and we look forward to to kind of bring some good business to our vendors of downtown and the surrounding area. With the items pertaining to the agenda, as as the mayor has already confirmed, we have moved consent agenda item number six to new business number two. That allows us to have some conversation about that without having that on the consent agenda. So we will proceed forward with that. We also added some notes to the board appointments to make it abundantly clear. One of the appointments for the planning board is an ETJ alternate. We will be, if the board is okay with that appointment, we will send that forward to the county commissioners for ultimate adoption of that. Anybody who's an in-town resident and has an appointment, we don't need to county commissioner consent, but the ETJ residents will have consent from the county commissioner. So adoption on the consent agenda night for Ms. Mize will basically be contingent upon county commissioner approval as well. So Mr. Jones and Mr. Messick will help us facilitate that in the coming days if the board wishes to approve all those appointments on the consent agenda. Number seven on the consent agenda now, which is the E R E I D. That is something that you just had at our last meeting, and you may ask, why are we doing this again? We're setting a hearing or a public meeting to go over the same thing we talked about. It turns out that it was improperly noticed. I don't think it was any fault of the towns. But nonetheless, we don't feel like we had the proper two weeks' notice. And so have an abundance of caution. And again, as I've stated many times, we like to do things the right way. Rather than trying to finagle a way around it, we're just gonna simply go through it again. We're gonna, we'll make sure it's properly advertised and go through the same conversation. Again, maybe something new will come up. Maybe it won't. If nothing else, we'll have full confidence that after December fourteenth, we can proceed forward without having any hesitation whether it was done correctly or not. So I think that's the proper way to do it. It's awkward. It adds time. But again, I think it's the right thing to do. So that's what we're gonna do. And that is the extent of my comments for the agenda tonight. So.
Thank you, Chris.
If you have any questions for me, I'm good.
Okay. My comments, I'll talk a little bit about the tree lighting and to simply say that the group that came together and put this together did a fantastic job. It's very challenging to have year after year a certain way that you go about this ceremony and then to have to figure out a way to do it from a technical point of view and get the pre-recordings of the things that need to be a part of the festivities that would have ordinarily been live and then to try to carry out the actual tree lighting itself. So kudos to the volunteers who stepped up and I thought just did a terrific job in pulling this whole thing together. So that is all I had. So we'll start with the commissioner updates and Jay, any?
No, sir. I don't have anything right now.
Okay. Kyle?
Sure. The tree lighting was was fantastic for for sure. So that was good. On the Pittsburgh Boys and Girls Club, we we continue to make really good progress on that. I think we've got five new members on the advisory board since last meeting. So we made a concerted effort to reach out and get some more people there, and that's worked well. We also have the donations coming in now, and we are much, much closer on a location. We'll be able to share that officially soon. But of course, you can donate at centralcarolinoclubs.org/donate. And then I think this is, it's kind of a small thing, but we recently had a suggestion that Chris moved the consent agenda after citizens matters so that there's actually, you know, time to to talk about the items potentially. So I think that's that's good and is a is a positive change.
Thank you. Okay. Michael?
Just want to echo what everyone had to say about, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, good, because I'm getting a message that maybe you can't. Echo all the thoughts on the tree lighting. I know that was a real challenge this year, and I think they did a great job, pulled it off. Bravo to the mayor for a fabulous reading. That was really enjoyable. So thank you, sir. And additionally, there was some fun with Santa in a blow-up snow globe that on two occasions, I think, lost power to the generator and collapsed on Santa. So that was fun. He thought so, too.
Yes.
Glad to see the Welcome Center at work for the tree lighting and for the Saturday where Chris was gonna be wrapping basketballs with lots of tape. And that's really it.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin?
No, I don't. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bonnet?
Yes, thank you. As regards climate change, this is not official business of the Chatham County Climate Change Advisory Board, but I have learned that the State Department of Environment has issued a request for proposals for rebates for electric vehicle charging infrastructure. And so that's for public notice here, and I will also share that with town staff. And it's probably too soon for us to apply in order to hope to benefit potentially as a town at our new town hall, because this is very short turnaround project by DEQ, but I estimate that there would be about three hundred installations of new EV chargers across the state. And so our chances aren't terribly bad if if we did want to go for that, but definitely for public benefit, a very wide array of entities, private, nonprofit, for-profit, are eligible for these rebates. It is going to be, applications will be reviewed on a competitive basis. And in my, in the offices of my day job at the Clean Energy Technology Center, I would welcome people to contact me there for assistance with the application. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, John. The next item of business would be approval of the consent agenda as changed with item number six moving to new business two. So I would entertain a motion to approve or further modify the consent agenda.
Mayor, we have citizen matters before we go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, you're right. That always happens to me. Yes. Cassie, what do we have there?
Let me see if he's on.
I'm in trouble hearing you, Cassie.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see that he's on. So I'm not, maybe he wasn't able to log on, Mr. Joseph Barr.
Okay. All right.
And Mayor, I know we had one gentleman, I believe it's the Joan Cassie's referring to, that wanted to speak about Griffin Farms. Knowing that is an agenda item, but also knowing that this is, the Griffin Farms item is not the public hearing. I'm not sure what he wanted to speak to, but it was gonna be really up to the board to entertain those conversations or not, because there's no public feedback in the quadriannual hearing, because the hearings closed. And yet generally, we do not allow for public comment to be pertaining to agenda items. So but it doesn't appear Mr. Barr is on either way, so it may be a moot point.
Okay. All right. Well, now then, we would move to approval of the consent agenda with the change previously announced for item six, moving to new business item two. Do I hear such a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Enanos. All right. Thank you. So the first business then is old business number one, the Griffin Farms Town Homes. Who from planning is leading them off on this one?
Presenting. And host disabled participant screen sharing popping up. Oh, I think it's working now.
Should be good to go.
All right, thank you. Okay, can you see my full screen?
Yes.
Great. N C eighty-seven L L T is proposing a ninety-nine townhouse lot subdivision located in town limits on the southwestern portion of town as shown by the red outline property on the map. The undeveloped property is approximately sixteen point four-two acres and located south of the intersection of N C eighty-seven bypass and Bernie's Place on parcel seven zero zero six. The property is located in the R fifteen zoning district where townhouses are required to obtain a special use permit. The project also includes the creation of ninety-nine lots, which is a major subdivision and requires preliminary plat approval. The applicant has submitted the site plan, which also serves as the subdivision preliminary plat. The public hearing for the special use permit was held on August twenty-fourth. A summary of the discussion is included in the staff analysis. The planning board met on October fifth, and they did not recommend approval in a three-to-three tie vote. A summary of the discussion is also included in the staff analysis. These plans have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable standards, including public utilities, public safety, stormwater, erosion control, and planning. Per the zoning ordinance, section five point three point three point four six, townhouses section, the site plan shall meet the design requirements listed for planning developments. All areas other than public streets and lots shall be designated as common areas to the HOA. The developer shall submit a copy of the covenants and restrictions governing the common areas, owners association, and site per the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the applicant has submitted these proposed covenants and restrictions. For section five point three point three point eight, planning developments in the R fifteen zoning district, the maximum number of dwelling units shall not exceed eight units per gross acre. Proposed project of ninety-nine units on sixteen point four-two acres is approximately six units per acre. An overall design that encourages cluster and compact development that is interrelated in length sidewalk and/or pedestrian paths is required, and the applicant is proposing sidewalks on both sides of the internal streets. A community building or clubhouse is required. The applicant is proposing a twenty-by-thirty-foot shelter including a storage room and restroom as the community building. Five percent of gross land area is reserved as common open space, including minimum active recreation space. Applicant has met this requirement showing point eight-two acres being included in the open space, and the applicant is proposing seven point eight-two acres of open space. Play area of at least fifty-six square feet per unit, which is two thousand three hundred fifty-two square feet, is being provided. The applicant meets this requirement by providing four thousand square feet of play area. Per the subdivision ordinance, street trees are required. Sidewalks shall be bordered on both sides of the streets. And curb and gutter is required, which the applicant is providing. There are four additional points of consideration as requested by the applicant, which we will go over in more detail, including number one, a minor modification to the plan. Number two, sewer allocation request. Number three, aside, the applicant is requesting a fee and loan to the sidewalk requirement along N C Highway eighty-seven. Number four, the applicant is requesting a fee and lieu to the public recreation requirement. So starting with the minor modification, it's it's difficult to see, but there's a small red circle on the map, and the applicant slightly shifted the access easement so not to overlap the and this was at the adjacent property owner's request. Moving on to item number two.
Teresa, can you repeat that, what it replaced? You kind of broke in and out, at least on my screen.
Oh, sorry. So the the small red circle on the map, it shows where the access easement was slightly shifted over so not to overlap the hammerhead turnaround. And this was at the request of the adjacent property owner.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Number two, the applicant has been working with the town attorney and staff to draft proposed language regarding sewer allocation for the board's consideration. If the board approves the resolution approving the special use permit as written, condition number one states that the special use permit will expire twelve months after sewer capacity is allocated unless construction has started or unless an extension is given. And then that deadline lasts up to an additional three years unless infrastructure is complete or unless another extension is given. So if the resolution provided to you is approved, this language is already included in the approval. Number three is regarding the sidewalk requirement along N C Highway eighty-seven, which the applicant is requesting to pay a fee and lieu. Condition number four in the resolution approving the preliminary plat states that a fee and lieu can be considered plus ten percent contingency, which the applicant is requesting the board to consider approving this tonight. Per the applicant's constructions estimates of an approximate fifteen hundred linear foot, five-foot-wide sidewalk, this would total to one hundred and seven, two hundred, one hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to be paid to the town upon final plat approval. The applicant also submitted an email from N C D O T Assistant District Supervisor Jen Britt, which states, N C D O T recommends the sidewalk be located outside of the clear recovery area, that there is a great deal of truck traffic on eighty-seven, that pedestrian crossings are not recommended on N C eighty-seven, and that N C D O T does not recommend one-side, one-sided curb and gutter as it would pose maintenance cost increase and operational issues. The email also states that the design, location, and number of driveways were approved by D O T, and their comments reflect the number of entrances to N C eighty-seven to be reduced to just one entrance being located across Bernie's Place. And for number four, for the board to consider is the public recreation requirement. The subdivision ordinance requires public public recreation facilities at one thirty-third of an acre for each lot, which totals to approximately three acres. The applicant was proposing a ten point five-seven acre parkland dedication, which was included in the August twenty-fourth public hearing packet. The applicant has since changed that to request to pay a fee and lieu. Condition number seven of the resolution approving the preliminary plat states that due to recreational needs of the proposed development being met by other recreational facilities, that a recreation fee and lieu shall be paid at the time of the final plat approval. So again, this is in the, this is already in the resolution. It's approved as as written. Staff recommends the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners make three separate motions. There was a small adjustment needing, needing in the resolution to approve the special use permit. So currently, it says maximum height of forty feet. That should actually be thirty-five feet. So motion number one would be make a motion to adopt the attached resolution approving, which would include a maximum height to thirty-five feet or denying an application for a special use permit. So you have an approval document and a denial document to can to consider. And again, this resolution for approval includes the deadline to be contingent on sewer capacity allocation. The second motion would be to approve or deny the applicant's request to pay a fee and lieu of constructing a sidewalk along N C Highway eighty-seven in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars to be paid upon final plat approval. Motion number three would be make a motion to adopt the attached resolution approving an application for preliminary plat for Griffin Farms subdivision or denying the preliminary plat request. And again, the resolution for approval includes the requirement for a fee and lieu of public dedication of a recreational area. So thank you. Please let me know if you have any questions, and the applicants are present to answer any questions you may have for them as well.
Are there discussion or questions?
Teresa, I'll start with a couple of questions. In in regards to the the resolution that's in, that was provided yesterday, I believe, it talks about the sidewalk in fee and lieu, and it says that if if the town or D O T deem that it is, it's not possible that it, then it would be. So is this, I think what we've seen in our packet is that the D O T has deemed that it's not what's the wording here? Impractical or undesired?
Um, my interpretation of the email is that it's not, it's not that it's impossible, but D O T does does not recommend it due to truck traffic and.
Well, I think they said no crossing, but I think they referred to a detail in our comprehensive transportation plan, actually, that would be a sidewalk that would be outside of the right-of-way.
Right.
In in place of, I'm assuming, be one that's that's next to the right-of-way. So I think sidewalk is certainly desired by the town. So in in the case of the way that this is written, when it says impractical or undesired by the town or or D O T, I'm not sure how that goes other than, you know, what you're saying here to accept that amount provided as the as the fee and lieu.
Yes, sir. If if the if the board agreed with that, you can accept that amount being one.
And commissionership, Teresa, Jeff, and I have had many conversations with Dan Morrison, the development team. And and one of those conversations a number of weeks ago included Jen Brett from D O T, as well as another representative, that their name fell as me from D O T. Mainly, it was Jen that was involved. And we talked about the, you know, the feasibility of that sidewalk. Because again, our our transportation plans identify that area as an area that sidewalk is is needed or desired. And so what was, we discussed was D O T did not want us to put curb and gutter. Um, a- and so what was, we discussed was DOT did not want us to put curb and gutter on eighty seven. If you don't put curb and gutter on eighty seven on either side. Then you must have at least a twenty foot separation from the edge of pavement to the sidewalk. Well, anybody who's driven that section knows it's a super elevated road. So then you get into the grading where the road is elevated. Then you'd be forced to put the sidewalk on the backside of the hill on the downhill side of it, pushing it further away from the road. And now you're into the development itself and, and really pushing. Um, you know, the development, probably redoing the entire preliminary plat, which again, is not that, that big concern as far as the town is. But then looking at, okay, if someone's walking down that path, are they going to walk at the base of a hill? Um, and have to figure out some connectivity in there, knowing that it's not going to be located visibly from the road. And so DOT had concerns, we talked about, you know, do we make them um, or ask that the developer put it on the other side of the road? Where the elevation isn't as significant, DOT recommended against that as well. Um, as you may imagine, DOT is not going to come out and say, do not do this, or thou shall not do this. Um, they're just going to say, if we're not maintaining it, we'll make a recommendation. They didn't want us to put curb and gutter, the clearance requirements that are required with a pedestrian path along either side. Really just push this, push this uh, improvement to a more than likely impractical or infeasible or undesirable location. Um, because there will be sidewalk internal to the development. And if you get so far off the road, people aren't going to want to travel too much down the hill. So staff, as much as we would like to have the sidewalk in place, um, I think it is our recommendation that a fee in lieu. Is, is, is desirable as far as alternatives go, that way we can put sidewalk either. Um, somewhere else in the general vicinity to tie this in, um, or elsewhere in town to provide better uh, pedestrian connectivity. Um, and so again, DOT is not going to give you a, a thou shall not. But given the requirements of the speed of the road, the geometry of the road, the topography included with the road. Again, staff reluctantly probably feels that the fee in lieu is, is as good as what we're going to get on this.
Okay, um, so it, it seems to me that we would also not have sidewalks going from internal to out to eighty seven if. DOT doesn't want people crossing the road there, uh, it seems like we're setting up for a crosswalk that doesn't exist.
I, I'll defer to planning staff as well, but I, I would agree, I think the, the expectation of stubbing a sidewalk. Uh, leads to the insinuation that there will be a connection at some point. Um, and so I, I would say that if there's no intention of having a crosswalk. Um, that traverses eighty seven, I think deleting that from the preliminary plat would be appropriate.
And, and I think that would probably change the amount of the fee in lieu or potentially. Um, but I don't think we should have a sidewalk going to a place where we don't want people to cross the road and, and I agree, it's, it's not a good place for a crosswalk. Um, unfortunately, because there is sidewalks on, on Bernie's place, that could be a great connection.
And, and I think it's worth noting as well that the fee in lieu, we've worked with the developer on this one, um, where it's not a sheer or a um, a precise. Um, uh, one to one ratio in terms of what the sidewalk would take to be built. What we, what we did was take um, generic numbers presuming some neutral grade. Um, you know, a number, I mean, most sidewalks are going to involve, you know, some curb and gutter, obviously square yards of concrete. Uh, base that goes underneath the sidewalk. Um, a- and the other features that typically are included, what we tried to do was take fifteen hundred linear feet. What would be a typical sidewalk crawl section? Plus the hundred and ten percent of that number, and we tried to apply that because we felt like that if the sidewalk is impractical and feasible. That the, the price would have skyrocketed or ballooned. And if we think it's impractical, there's a reason that there's a fee in lieu. So the fee in lieu is based upon a number of linear feet. For what we expect the average sidewalk to cost. Um, and so it involves a little bit of topography, but not severe topography and it's certainly not just completely flat ground. So what we hope to get. Is a number that reasonably gets us fifteen hundred linear feet of sidewalk elsewhere in town.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, and then for number five, for the dedicated right of way, it says. Uh, it would be one foot beyond the proposed sidewalk improvements. So does, would the right of way still include the, the width for a sidewalk even though it's not? Put in place or how does that, how does not building sidewalk change the right of way dedication?
Teresa, do you want to tackle that one? Maybe Jeff.
Um, Kyle, I'm not sure that we either Teresa or myself know that answer, maybe there the applicant's intention here would know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to take that one. This, this is Landon Lovelace from Underfoot Engineering. Uh, I think number five speaks specifically to the frontage along NC eighty seven, NC eighty seven was developed. Quite a while back when uh, the DOT was actually using metric, so it is a. Thirty meter right of way, which comes out to like ninety eight point four feet or something like that. So it's actually way wider than anything that would be required. Um, so I, I think that number five was kind of, kind of a standard. Right away dedication or recognition note, but it's already there and it's already almost a hundred feet.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I guess maybe the applicant can talk about the, the change to, or maybe this is staff. Uh, which, which existing um, public recreational facilities serve this development? Um, and, and why there was the change from the land dedication and annexation that we had. Uh, talked about uh, during the public hearing.
Um, as to what existing recreation facilities we currently have in the area is Town Lake Park. That's the only park that's remotely close to this development. Um, over time, our master plan does have additional. Uh, regional and neighborhood parks that we would have throughout town in this, this part of town. Um, so a- as to what's existing, um, would be Town Lake Park in this area. Um, I mean, the applicant can speak to the change from a park dedication, land dedication to.
Well, and to, to add on the jest before the uh, applicant speaks, part of it was. Um, uh, probably derived from my comment to them. Um, because of the, the parcel that was to be dedicated, um, was predominantly wetland. Um, and did not appear to meet our open space requirements that we would typically have for this kind of recreation. So. Um, there was conversation about how to account for that, um, given that it was, you know, seventy, eighty percent wet. Um, and how the town would maybe utilize that as, as an open space area. And so I think at the end of the day, it was just agreed upon that a, a fee in lieu was perhaps. Uh, the best way to, to navigate that, given some uncertainty about. How that parcel would ultimately fold itself into our ultimate recreation plan.
Okay, and what's the magnitude of the, the fee in lieu for the recreation?
Currently, currently it's one thousand thirty dollars per lot. So that for times ninety nine. About one oh, one oh one thousand.
One oh, one oh one nine seventy, I think that's actually the, the, the number that you see there. Um, I think the sidewalk number got transposed because the sidewalk number, I believe, is one oh seven. Um, but the one oh one nine seventy would be the recreation fee in lieu. And Teresa, you can, uh, please, please fact check my number.
Yes, the sidewalk is one oh seven two fifty, so.
So we got one, one, one hundred and seven thousand two fifty is the fee in lieu for the sidewalk improvement. And then one oh one nine seventy is the fee in lieu for the recreation improvement.
Okay, I, I guess that's a. I, I'm surprised the recreation is less than the sidewalk, but I think that's something for us to change later, maybe.
Other questions or comments?
Um, yes, I have, I have a couple of comments. I'm very disappointed in reference to the other uh, exit. Which you indicated that DOT and candidate felt that one exit or in, an entrance would be enough. However, I don't think that that's the case. I'm very disappointed in that. So I really don't agree to that particular situation. Because really with the, I know that it's not in the ordinances, however. With a development this large, I think it needs another access and entrance point. Also in reference to the uh, recreation area. If this is a single, these are single family homes or town homes. Basically, if, unless they have yard in the back and they're, I assume that they're anticipating children. Uh, families with children are going to pop, possibly move into these areas. There's no play spaces for the children unless there's a backyard or a small front yard. So I have a little problem with that also. So I just don't think that that, that's just feasible to think that really. I know that Town Lake Park is close by and there may be some in the future. However, from what I'm looking at now, and if they build this, then what are you going to do about recreation for the children? Right there in there. You can't have any sidewalks. DOT indicated they did not like that particular idea. Of course, you wouldn't want to walk from this development to Town Lake Park because the street is so busy anyway. But I'm just concerned about the recreation and about that one entrance and exit. Because oftentimes you don't ever know what's going to happen in reference to trying to leave, something may happen, you may have to try to. Uh, lead the development and then if you only have one entrance, one exit, that, that can cause a great difficulty.
And Ms. Baldwin, uh, per the access, I, I did speak with Chief Griffin. Um, and I'll say indirectly with the fire marshal about this. Um, we've had some issues with.
So we'll notion, I mean, just whether. Robert, stay in the basement, we have to stay here or.
Nancy, can we mute that one, please?
Who is talking?
Uh, Edward Holmes was popping up, was talking.
Okay.
Um, but Ms. Baldwin, I, I spoke with the, the, the fire chief and, and the fire marshal about it and. They both kind of agreed that we would like to have something in our ordinance and they would like to enforce it. Um, but in absence of our ordinance supporting that, that their original. Um, determination on this project was that they were not going to require that secondary ingress and egress. So. Um, I, I think staff would agree with you, but unfortunately ordinance doesn't currently back that up. I know Mr. Morris has talked a lot about this and they may have some comment. For you, um, pertaining to such. Um, uh, but that, that was discussed since we've had the last conversation in front of the board with this. Um, uh, but I did confirm with the, our fire folks in town that they were not going to be requiring secondary ingress and egress.
If, if I may speak as well, um, this, Ms. Baldwin, we, we definitely heard your comment at the public hearing. And we, we opened those discussions back up both with, with town staff and, and the DOT. Uh, what we had originally met on the project, DOT was adamant about not putting a second entrance there. Specifically at the location, uh, where, where in the curve and at the, at the high side of the super elevated road. Um, in, in addition, there, there are three connection points to adjacent parcels. So as development continues to go about that way. Eventually there will be, uh, there will be multiple access points. Um, as far as the, is the. Play, that's also a very good point. And I just want to clarify the fact that there are, there are two different things that we're looking at here. Um, one is, one is the actual recreation requirement. Um, which is separate from the play area requirement for specifically for town homes. Um, Teresa, I don't know if you're able to pull the site plan back up. Uh, but it might be helpful. So there, there is a, um, there is a requirement for, um, specifically for play areas for town homes. And if you, if you look down, um, below, yeah, there you go. Uh, there, there is a, there is an area there that exceeds what is required. It's got a sidewalk down from the community building. Um, it's got a path around there, there's gazebos and there's a, there's a huge play area there. Um, so there is in fact a place. Um, for the families that will live here to, to take their children in, into play. Um, there's access from the other road as well, from road three. Um, uh, there's, there's a flat area that walks around. Um, the BMP and folks can walk along the dam and get down to that area as well. So that, that's separate from the required, uh, actual recreation dedication.
And the backyards, I don't know if you want to talk to the backyards, there are backyards.
Yeah, and, and those, these units also do have, um, it's. Unfortunately, a sad state of affairs when we're, when we're talking about a thirty five foot backyard as a large backyard, but as far as town homes go, that's. Typically twice what anybody does anymore. Um, typically they'll meet the minimum rear yard setback and, and go from there, but. These all have at least thirty five feet or more in the rear yard and all of those units that back up to the pond into that play area. Um, have an area out the back where, where people will be able to access that play area as well.
And let me see that play area again, couldn't quite see that on that map. Could you circle that again, please? Right there. Okay, thank you.
And Teresa, for Ms. Baldwin's sake, can you reiterate the, the size of that?
Four thousand square feet.
And our code requirement is?
Um, I think it was about. Close to half of that. Two thousand three hundred and fifty two. Is the requirement and they're providing four thousand.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Ms. Baldwin, this is Dan Morse. Um, I did want to just speak real quick too personally about this, uh, the, the secondary entrance is that. We originally had drawn this project up, we did have two entrances into the community. And uh, like we said before, uh, DOT, they were just adamant about not having a second one there. Um, so I, I, I know it's not in the ordinance and, and uh, it's not required there, but we're going to do it anyway. But um, it is one of those things where it's just not something that SCOD was willing to, to work with us on, so uh, so we didn't. And I apologize, I don't want that to upset you at all, but it's not being intended at all.
Well, I do understand DOT does not like that idea. But I think maybe that's something we need to look at as a town to require things like that in our ordinance.
And Ms. Baldwin, I'm writing a, a note down. Obviously, we had the conversation back in August, but I'm writing a note to remind myself again for us to. To draft an ordinance for y'all's consideration. Um, like many things, you know, especially with a quasi initial item. You know, so, something may fall through the cracks and we go, oh man, I wish we had that then. But obviously this has been a big uh, item of conversation. Uh, you and Mr. Farrell in particular have expressed your opinions on it. And I think they're, they're very well respected and well received. So um, I'll work with staff. And uh, we'll look at working with the fire marshal and fire chief and make sure the language works for their needs as well. And we'll see about getting something in front of y'all the next month or so, um, to get us attended to, because I know it's, it's, it's come up at a number of projects. This one's probably. Uh, burning the hottest with this, but um, we, we do want to be responsive to y'all's um, needs and concerns.
I will point out that the UDO would address this.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you both. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Jones. Yay. The UDO and uh, thank you Commissioner Baldwin for advocating for that, for your, expressing your concerns, for persistently expressing that concern. And.
Thank you, John. We lost you for a minute.
Uh, I'm sorry, I accidentally muted myself. Mr. Kennedy, I'm not sure if you've ever heard the story about the Powell Place project and the fact that that is lacking a second exit or entrance and. Um, in, indeed, there was early in the history, the development, a natural gas leak which required um, emergency. Uh, actions and it was uh, uh, an experience that. Many of the community uh, remembered distinctly and uh, caused uh, quite a motivation for us to try to do something about that. Lack of second entrance. So you're, you're noting this, it's greatly appreciated and, and we hope that we can circle back to it, maybe have an amendment. Some time for us to fix this problem. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have it in the UDO and then, but I think we could probably tie something up with using the same language and, and getting it buttoned up before that. But thank, thank you as well, Jeff.
Any other questions? Comments?
My only comment is my regret to the applicant that having only received the resolutions late yesterday afternoon, that I actually have not even read them. Today you just got, I was unable to do it and that was my day today. So when I look at some of the notes about the resolutions that were put forth, I even struggle to find those on the fly here. So I am totally unequipped to make my judgment on these resolutions. So that's where I sit, unfortunately. One thing I, I would ask of the, a couple of things of the applicant is I think staff had recommended some satellite or visitor parking. And I agree that something this dense, without some form of additional parking, only two parking spaces per unit is going to make it very difficult. Now, I, I think the road is wide enough for on-street parking, but with the density of the units, which again, I like. And the driveways, there's virtually no road space for on-street parking. And I think this development is going to suffer as a result. Where does, where does the visitor park when they want to come visit? And, you know, I'm in the garage and my other car, my, is in the driveway. You know, I, I just, I think it's, I think it's going to be proved to be a problem and wanted to know your thoughts on your reluctance to provide the parking.
The applicant respond?
Sorry, we had to take it off mute. Just a few ago, I'm, I'm not sure it's reluctance to do that. We, we've, we've been asked to put no parking signs on the one side of the street, which, which then hurts that side of it a little bit. In a townhome community like this, yeah, the, the parking is going to be a little bit, little bit tighter. Cause it's just, it's, yeah, it's more dense. But most likely, both people will be able to have, you know, a car in a garage and a car in the driveway. And for the visitors that do come by, they can park on the street temporarily and then, and then leave. And I know it was brought up before about what happens with, with, when, when people want to have parties. Well, I mean, that, that can happen in a regular, single-family community also, that they, that they line the streets and block streets. So there is, and I don't know, probably don't have any calculations, but there's probably, you know, I mean, especially at the, at the intersection, you know, there's, there's playing party where we don't have townhomes that, that there could be some areas in between driveways and, and those areas that could be parked at. I'm, I'm not sure. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not sure where, you know, there, there's, in a community this size, you know, how do we get the parking in there? I'm not, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. But I do think there are very few on-street opportunities. And I agree with you that probably at the intersection in, interior to the site is the biggest stretch of road that could accommodate some vehicles. And I, I think honestly, to put in remote parking probably requires losing some units. But yeah, I think this, I think this project, if constructed in this form, is probably going to have a real, real problem with some, some parking issues. And, and you know, the single-family lots typically don't have driveways this proximate to each other, leave a lot more road area available for, from parking. So I appreciate your, your answer. Now, the other thing I wanted to know is there was mentioned last meeting in August about a revised sewer schedule and allocation request. I didn't find that in any of the documentation. Unless it's in the, the resolution, I, I did not find it.
I can, I can take that one or Chris, if you want to. I think this, it is addressed in the resolutions. It's, it's tied to approval and availability of allocation as opposed to a construction schedule. Resolution is pretty clear that if approval for the preliminary plat and, or special use permit is granted, that it, it is that the developer's sole risk to build before he has sewer allocation. So they have timelines tied to the actual allocation of the sewer rather than the construction of the site.
Okay, okay.
And, and, and I would, I would clarify that build is horizontal improvements, not vertical improvements.
Correct.
Would enable, I guess, recording of the plat?
Maybe.
No, the plaque keep recorded until the improvements are in, final plat.
Yeah, the horizontal improvements or the townhouses. That's what I'm saying. The final plat would be when the horizontal improvements are built, not when the townhouses are built.
Correct. But I think the, I mean, we would not grant a final plat without sewer allocation. And I think basically we, we, we would not get much beyond probably the erosion control in the grading plan without sewer allocation. Now, we might, we might be able to have the wet utilities and, and the dry infrastructure roads, et cetera, kind of installed. But I, I've got a suspicion that, that Mr. Morris is, is probably not going to want to go to that level until he's got a pretty firm grasp of, at least for phase one of sewer allocation. But they might go ahead, go through their site planning process, the time that that takes, go through their erosion control, go through the grading plans, and then hopefully have some better clarity of it. And that's why the, the resolution, and I certainly apologize on behalf of staff for having that later than not to you. We've been working diligently on it, really all parties, planning staff, Mr. Messick and the petitioners, including Mr. Bradshaw, been trying to tidy this thing up to make it as, as clear as it possibly can moving forward, should the board wish to approve something. But with that, it is, is try to, to protect both sides. One, we know that, that sewer, and that's obviously a conversation we'll have later this evening as well. Sewer's been a big to-do. Hopefully we'll have some, some clarity on that moving forward. But to not just outright say no to every single project until we get to that point. To say if, if the board thinks this is a good project, it meets the ordinance, then we'll proceed forward with it. Mr. Morris's developer understands his risk in trying to horizontally develop something. But basically, nothing will actually be constructed until sewer allocation is provided and they can proceed forward with anything else. And, and I'll defer to the, to Mr. Morris or Mr. Bradshaw to reaffirm or clarify any of my comments.
Well, I don't disagree that that seems like a good strategy in a difficult situation.
Thank you, I guess.
Thank you.
I think it is unfortunate, I guess, that a lot of these things like, like parking and entrances seem to meet our, our current ordinance and, and hopefully would not meet our UDO, which of course does not exist right now. So I, I don't, I don't think it's excellent. And I, I would support deferring or postponing if Commissioner Fioke want to take more time to look through the ordinances. I, I wouldn't mind that myself as we did get them recently.
Well, I, I would if, well, I'll make a motion to table it until the 14th so that I can actually review the resolutions.
There's a motion to table until December 14th. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Three, four, I got?
Yes.
John, how did you?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to table until December 14th approved.
Mr. Mayor, before it's tabled, can we, can we ensure that anybody that has comments is able to speak on them, please? Honestly, it's a little bit disappointing that, that it's being tabled when I think outside of information being given at the last minute and not having time. And I understand it fully, Mr. Fioke. I understand that completely. But this has also dragged on a long time and, and I think Mr. Morris deserves an answer. And I understand the, the need to table it. Let's at least make sure that whoever is going to speak to the project speaks tonight. So we, we understand on the 14th that it's, it's Mr. Fioke having time to have read the resolution and then making a vote.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll tell you guys, I don't, I don't, I'm not happy to, to make that motion, but I, I don't have enough, I don't have a choice. I cannot make an informed decision without having reviewed the information. And I have that obligation to represent the citizens of Pittsboro and I, you know, got the material too late.
Is there a to the point, which I think is valid, or if there are some other specific things in this package, or specific comments for the developer? And, and we have them available now that would be useful, I think, in preparing for the December 14th meeting.
I, I agree. I think my, my comments are that I feel like the recreation fee in lieu is, is a big change in that I think that also, I, I looked at that as also helping in the future of the parking issue and that there's almost no common parking. Or, or in particularly parking for the amenity building. I think there's two parking spots parallel in front of the amenity building, which would, is essentially on-street parking anyway. So like I said, I, they're, they're just, so parking entrances, sidewalks, even what's referred to as, as the play area near the wetlands and the storm management on. I, I don't think it's excellent, but I, I'm, I think it meets our current regulations likely.
Landon. Go ahead, Pam.
Now, I was going to say, Mr. Lovelace and everyone, I don't object to the project because we definitely need some affordable housing in Pittsboro. So I do think it's a good project, but it just has a couple drawbacks. So don't be mistaken, you know, don't get me wrong. I don't object to the project. It's just some things which I would have preferred rather.
We, we're not on mute.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, Ms. Baldwin, a hundred percent. And that's why I want to do this project so badly. Cause this, this is an area that there is no new construction available. And thank you for your support on that. Thank you.
And I, I think to, to take that one step further, this, this is attainable housing. It's workforce housing and townhomes in Pittsboro are, they're non-existent. And I think that speaks to a lot of, you know, I, I'm, I'm glad that you are in general support and just see a few drawbacks. That's, that's good. That, that tells us that in general, we hit the mark. I think there are trade-offs when we're talking about additional parking spots and, and Michael, you hit, you hit the nail on the head earlier that, you know, with the topo and, and, and the density that's out there, in order to put additional parking spots in there, you would lose units. And every unit that's lost, it just adds onto the cost for whoever's trying to buy them. So there's always a balance. I think, you know, the other important thing is that this does meet all of the ordinance requirements. And I think we've had a lot of good conversations today. And it sounds like there are a number of items that will probably be in front of y'all in short order with regard to changes to the ordinance or maybe the UDO, the new UDO gets adopted and addresses some of these things like parking, like second entrances, like a higher rec pay, payment, things like that, that everybody agrees are desirable. And, you know, we, we have to balance creating a neighborhood that is, that stays attainable, that stays affordable while also meeting the ordinance. So we don't, we don't disagree with a lot of the sentiments that you have. They're just, there, there's trade-offs.
But it is bad.
And I agree with Pamela about this housing style and type. I think it's a very effective and necessary part of the supply. Landon, technical question, is the stormwater device a, a wet pond or is it possible that it could be a bio-retention?
It is a wet pond. And the short answer is no. I think from a, from a quality perspective, obviously bio-retentions are better from a water quality perspective, but for quantity perspective, they're not. And we're, we're also taking some off-site runoff and, you know, bio-retentions are nice, but they also, they come with a whole lot of maintenance costs. Ultimately, the HOA is going to be responsible for that. Ultimately, these are attainable units and the, the difference in maintenance between bio-retentions and wet ponds is significant. So obviously, when we're looking at what we select, we try to balance what looks good, what, what is functional, what meets all the water quality and quantity requirements. I can tell you, we did, you know, we, we Dan voluntarily did some enhanced landscaping around the pond. It, it truly is intended to be a feature. Obviously, it's right next to the play area. It's, we've got split rail fence around it and, and a bunch more trees and landscaping that wouldn't otherwise be required. We've called for some, some signage along the dam, kind of where it goes down to the play area for some environmental educational signage to explain to people what stormwater management is and what the wet pond function is. So we, we, we get that question a lot, Michael. And, and I think there are many sides to an argument. And I would contend that bio-retention is not always better. And in fact, a lot of times it costs more. It may not be the best solution unless you're in an urban setting where you really don't have the way in to do it.
Yeah, this is, uh, just, it's in a prominent location and so thinking also about safety perspectives. But I agree, a wet pond can be a very nice amenity when well kept.
I have just one comment to the developer. Also, I, I support this development. I also, you know, in the, look for the two entrances, egress and ingress. But I guess my, like I said, I'm in support of this, but the only question I have is maybe to Jeff, Mr. Jones, could kind of give us a little information why the planning board voted three to three?
I think the planning board voted three to three because they didn't think that it was, you know, in the character of the surrounding neighborhood. You got farms, you have, you know, some less dense, single-family housing across the street. They just thought that it, it might just not be in keeping with, with the surrounding area. And I think the, the entry, two entries and on-street parking may have swayed those three folks who voted to not recommend approval on, on the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Before we move on? And thank the applicant very, very much. And from my perspective, this kind of development is pretty much essential as a part of the what's available within Pittsboro as we grow and we try to become affordable to more and more people. So I thank you. I thank you for uh, patience and we will uh, be working on this uh, between now and the fourteenth. And we appreciate your time this evening.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, to, to add a couple of things, one, and Landon touched on this lightly. Um, is this is a quasi-essential matter. Um, obviously we're not in a public hearing, but um. The requirement, when you have quasi-essential, is that if it meets the ordinance, you shall grant the permit. That is a statutory uh, kind of guidance on that. It's discretionary application of standards, but it meets our ordinance. You, you are, you shall grant the permit. Um, so I say that uh, one, just to provide you some, some general guidance, but also that if, if something um, that you see in this development. That you say, I wish we could have had this. It could be the secondary ingress and egress. It could be uh, common area parking. It could be recreational fee in Lou. What, any, any number of things as you uh, re-review this between now and December fourteenth. I would ask the board to prepare a list for, so that I can provide to Mr. Jones and the planning staff. Of some items that we can fold into the new U D O um, to, to look at these types of things as they come back up. Again, every, every project's a little bit different, um, but if there's something you say, man, I wish we had that in there. Um, there's no better time to mark that down than when it's, you're currently looking at a project. Um, because as, as we all know, we'll get busy, it'll slip by and we'll, it will be on the next one, go, man, I wish we had addressed that. So. I, I, I welcome the feedback from the board. If you find anything, again, not to detract from, from Mr. Morse's project here, because if it meets the ordinance, you shall grant the permit per statutory guidance. Um, additionally, that if, if, as you look through the resolutions um, in, in preparation for the fourteenth. If you see anything that causes a question, brings some concern, um, feel free to forward those questions and comments to me. Um, I'll be happy to work with Mr. Morse and his, his staff as, um, or his um, consultants, um, as we've done to date. Uh, but try to, to try to mitigate those um, concerns or any questions and get those back to you. So that when we reconvene on the fourteenth, that we have as succinct as possible um, of a, of an action on this and the board can. Can feel prepared to make that decision that night um, and allow staff um, us to do a better job of getting you information. So you feel prepared to make a decision when you're asked.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Right. We will then move on to uh, item two, rezoning of uh, R E Z twenty twenty oh four and is that? Who's presenting?
Mr. Mayor, I think you need, I think you need to vote on the motion to table. I don't think you ever took.
We did vote on the motion to table.
Okay.
Didn't.
Mr. Mayor, I think you did vote on it. The final tally was actually announced and, and uh.
Final tally was unanimous.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Teresa, I'll be presenting again.
Hi, Teresa.
So moving on to the next item, John and Denise Mitteratondo are proposing to rezon parcel six two one six located at two five three nine. U S sixty-four Business West from R A two. To R A zoning district. This parcel is approximately three point six one acres. There's currently a single family dwelling unit located on the property. Adjacent properties are undeveloped, though there are other single family dwellings located nearby. And as explained during the public hearing, the subject property is located um, on three sides bordered by three sides by the larger forty-six acre parcel. Which the applicant owns as well. And the larger parcel was rezoned R A last year. And the applicant meant to rezon both parcels at the same time. Um, and realized when that wasn't the case, um, came to rezon the smaller piece. We got both pieces, we both, we both rezoned R A. Now, the land use map designates this property for low-density residential neighborhood land use category. This category includes residential development at a low enough density to support onsite septic system. And the proposed rezoning is consistent with the future land use maps designation. Other custom rezoning is also consistent with the existing residential uses located near the property. The public hearing was held on October twenty-sixth. No one spoke for or against. The planning board met on November second and recommended approval in a five to one vote. Um, the dissension was explained to be due to boarding and rooming houses. And the use sheet metal roofing shops. To be permitted in the R A, but not be permitted in the R A two zoning district. So that was. One of the board members. Um, and staff finds this property to be in a suitable location for residential agriculture. It's compatible with the surrounding uses. It's consistent with the future language plan and therefore staff recommends approval of the zoning request.
Okay.
Staff recommends the board to take two separate motions. First motion would be to adopt. The resolution or the consistency statement for approval. The second motion would be to approve the general use rezoning request. Thank you. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. There are. Discussion, questions?
And, and Mr. Mayor, I would add too, that if you recall from our, our previous public hearing. Um, due to COVID altering some of the rules regarding public hearings. In particular legislative public hearings, there was a twenty-four hour period after the closing of the public hearing that, that staff was able to receive comments. We did not receive any comments pertaining to this. Um, so the board should feel um, more than welcome to, to render a decision on this item.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Barring any questions or comments, I'll move for. Uh. Make a motion for a resolution adopting uh, approval.
Of the consistency statement?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Move to. Move to approve the rezoning. Second.
Is there a second? Michael, did you second? All those in favor?
Yeah, yeah. Aye. Aye.
It's three votes. Pamela?
Aye.
Okay, Jay? Okay, okay, unanimous. I just go, thank you. Thank you, Teresa.
Move up the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so our uh, next item is the report from the town manager on the sewer capacity allocation status. I suspect this will be.
And Cassie, if you can just bring that memo up.
All right. Which you're on, man?
I am on. I'm trying to get the. My screen to work with me here. I've lost the. The zoom.
Uh-oh.
I can, I can hear everybody, but I can't find everybody on the screen here.
You can, you're, but you can't see us. Is that the?
Well, they tried already. Yeah, but that's, that's, that's.
It's the. Let me see if I can. Sorry, y'all. I don't know how I got off the. Don't know why I paused it.
You might have to leave and come back on.
That's what I'm trying to, here we go. Oh, I'm back. Sorry, that's a bit of a cluster.
Okay.
Hope for the rest of the presentation goes better than me trying to start it. Um, Cassie, can you pull up the um. The presentation or the, the memo um, that is um. On the agenda.
Did you hear me, Chris?
I did not.
It's not letting me get to the draw from home.
Okay, um. Let me. I had such good success trying to get this going. Maybe it'll work. Can you share the screen, Cassie?
You should, are going to be able to share because everyone's available to share.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just going to go to the website and pull it up.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's showing me an error message when I try to share it on mine. Once I think we've kind of figured out the virtual realm that rears its head. Um, well, while Cassie's bringing that up, we'll go ahead and kind of get started on this and, and I appreciate everyone's patience on this for the last couple of months. Obviously just kind of came to a head at the end of September, uh, Mr. Bradley, uh, Mr. Kirk Bradley with um, Mosaic and Eco Northwood. Uh, those partners there, uh, they submitted a request that kind of um, it generated a, a, a greater review of our sewer allocation. Uh, both the existing capacity as well as our allocation policy. Um, and so I've spent um, a, a great amount of time um, trying to simplify this. It's like, it's quite a convoluted. Series of things, if you will, for like a better way to put it. And, and trying to figure out what our realities are. Um, we certainly have uh, a, an operating sewer plant. Um, we've got some other projects coming online. Um, but understanding how um. Our, our process moving forward with new projects, um, again, like Mr. Morse's project, quite a number of them. In, in Chatter Park, um, as well as others and understanding what we truly have available. Um, we certainly want to be considerate of state policy. Um, we can't be ignorant to that um, as we go through these. Um, allocations, um, and then just really balancing. Where, where growth can go and, and sewer allocation is really kind of a economic driver. Um, I think the question was posed to me um, a couple of months ago, and again, I've, I'm three months in, which it feels like a few years honestly so far. Um, I haven't gone completely gray yet, which is good, I guess, and I'm keeping it. I'll, I'll, I'll take gray over losing it, but um. There's, there's been quite a, a lot of conversation about sewer. Um, and, and someone asked, what do other boards do with sewer? And my response kind of uh, maybe flippant was, other boards don't have to deal with it. They, they've already got it figured out and they're fortunate enough where they don't have to really worry about. They just look at the projects and, and kind of gauge um, what they have to do on that. Um. Cassie, you're going to kill me, but it's a different memo. That's, 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 that's a later item. It's the other sewer one. I'll see if I can find it. Yes, ma'am, that's it right there.
And you didn't see it now?
Yep, I can. Thank you. If you keep, if you'll scroll down um, until page five, that'd be great. There we go. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, and, and so what I've tried to do is condense a lot of information and, and again, I'll, I'll say like I, I said before back in September. And I also said in October that me putting this together was not um, a, a solitary effort. I've had a lot of conversations. Um, with staff, uh, with outside uh, partners, stakeholders, consultants, et cetera. And trying to make sense of all this. Um, there's a lot of information out there. Um, there's a lot of projects that will have project demand. We're not going to delve in that tonight. Um, or at least I'm not, I'm not uh, intending to present that tonight. It's, tonight's more about having the conversation of where we currently stand. Now, we do have, we know there's a lot of projects coming down the pipeline. No pun intended. And we know that they're going to want sewer. Um, and so I think for us having a, a good basic premise of where we stand in terms of. Our existing flow, what we've allocated, what's been allocated but not permitted. Um, having an idea of those flows, what the, what the projects in the horizon are. Um, as well as some conversation about what our options are going to be. Um, and that's probably as important as anything else is, is okay, well, here's where our reality appears to be. Um, and then what can we do to improve that reality? Um, so this first chart that I have here. And again, please, um, I'll, I'll be looking at faces, so try to chime in and, and feel free to interrupt if something doesn't make sense. Um, or if you have questions, I certainly want to be attentive and make sure that everyone is, is getting the full effect of this. Um, and I'll say, you know, obviously we have uh, Mr. Bradley's requests um, later on this agenda. I don't know that we're going to have the full comfort to render a decision on that. Um, this evening, I think we'll have more, I think we'll be better informed hopefully than we did when we started this meeting. And with where we're at sewer-wise, um, but I think that, um, and I've spoken to Mr. Bradley and he understands that and he, he wants to be um, considerate of our needs. Um, so he's, he's been a real um, uh, patient person in all this, so I'll be remiss. Thank him for his patience on this, as well as a bunch of other folks who are desperately seeking sewer and are waiting for us to quote unquote, figure it out. So. Um. Uh, again, we'll kind of dive into it with that noted. So what you see here on the screen, any of this is effective data is eleven one. That's basically just a placeholder, um, saying that that's, that's current status. That could easily just say eleven twenty-three. That's just where we stand today. Um, but just for the sake of the mapping this out, any other dates that you see are kind of ballpark estimates. I think they're realistic estimates. Um, but anytime you make a conjecture about something, it's inherently inaccurate. Um. You know, it may not be April first for something. It could be May, it could be March, it could be, you know, June. But I think it's the best guess estimate about when it would be. Obviously the further you go out, the more unclear and the more uncertain the number is. Um, and so I'll, I'll just say that for the effective dates that you see here. Um, the, the gallons per day that you see. Uh, that's what G P D is, um, and I apologize for any acronyms. If any of those don't make sense, please stop me and say, Chris, what the heck is G P D? And I'll be happy to um, answer that as best I can. Um, those are, as you can tell, I did not, you know, round four ninety-eight zero forty-one. That's as precise number as we could get. Um, anything else in round numbers is going to be basically the capacity of plants and the roundabout number, the basically the permitted flow, um, and not the actual precision. So as we go through this chart here, tributary flow. Is really what matters. So when we talk about tributary flow, that is the amount of sewer that we flow into Robus Creek right now through our plant. We have a seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon per day plant. That's what the permit goes up to. Uh, currently we are permitted um, to flow at eighty percent of that. Um, there are some um, that think we might be able to go to ninety and we'll have to get state confirmation whether we go to ninety percent. Uh, with all the work that Wooten is doing on our N P D S, um, and some other projects with the Sanford line, we might be able to go to ninety. You'll see in the numbers, it doesn't make that much of a difference whether we're at eighty or ninety. Um, we ultimately will be able to go to a hundred with that. Um, and we'll talk about that further. But right now, when we talk about tributary flow, that is our actual real flows and that's at four ninety-eight zero forty-one. Um, and so when we look at that, eighty percent of seven fifty is six hundred thousand. So we are, um, I believe the number was sixty-six percent is what we're flowing at currently out of our eighty percent, which is our permitted capacity from the state. Are permitted and not tributary. These are the projects that have received allocation, but they are not yet um, uh, flowing. Um, or they're not yet been assigned a tributary flow. This is sometimes called the paper flow. Flowing, or they're not yet been assigned to tributary flow. This is sometimes called the paper flow. So when you combine that one eleven four twenty with four ninety-eight zero forty-one. Our total flow allocated, which means that is both tributary flow and flow that is. Not yet been assigned to tributary, which means the the first year that a project's in in place. The state will assign, you know, you're very familiar with the three hundred and sixty gallons per day for a residential unit. And that's based off a three-bedroom home, but generally, it's a hundred and twenty gallons per bedroom. With that, during the first year, the state's going to want you to assign that paper flow at the full three hundred and sixty gallons per day. Per per household. And so after a year, we have the ability. And as as we have our town engineer come on staff, we'll have to be really diligent about making sure that we get these tributary flows looked at. Because we know off the bat that they're not going to flow at that same number. And so if we have a hundred and eleven thousand gallons of permitted but not tributary. We can probably guess that that hundred and eleven might be as low as eighty thousand. It could be even less than that. And so that'll really help our numbers as we start having projects come to reality. They have a year's worth of flow. We will then look at that. We'll have the state reduce that paper flow amount. And ultimately, that actually ends up giving us more paper flow to allocate. Then we look at the the next line there is allocation approved, not permitted and not tributary. This is allocations that have been provided by the town, but the project has not come to fruition. So they are not flowing sewer and they're not, so they're not within their first year. Nor are they past their first year, and they're actually flowing into tributary. So this is kind of a a liability, if you will. A flow that's on the books, but has yet to come to fruition. And so that's where the next line comes in. If you look at the total flow against our tally. It's seven eighty-four, seven sixty-two, and that number is the six oh nine four sixty-one, which is our total flow allocated. Plus the allocation that's been approved, but it's not flowing, which is the one seventy-five three oh one. So when you look at our plant capacity, we're at seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons. Now, again, we we feel confident that when those flows. Become tributary flows, that they'll be far less than that amount. But if you look at just the sheer amount, that's actually showing us at negative thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand gallons. And so when we look at that, you say, man, that's a real cause for concern. We need to make sure that we're not doing more than our plant capacity is. And so a- as we look at that, that's that's certainly the first kind of asterisk or red flag is is showing that we're we're negative in that capacity. As as we've talked about sewer in the past, the town board adopted a sewer allocation policy in May of twenty nineteen. That suggested that we go to a hundred and ten percent of our plant capacity, which is the eight twenty-five, as you see here on the screen. The board also adopted our sewer allocation policy, which is the the guiding document that was adopted in October of twenty nineteen. So when someone does apply for a request, similarly to Mr. Bradley's request that we have this evening, we've had in the last couple of agendas. That is the policy that we go by, and that was adopted just over a year ago. And so I did include, for the sake of the board, a hundred and ten, a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent of our plant. Combined with the Chatham Park Water Recovery Center. And so, again, I think everyone kind of perceives the the windfall moment or the quote-unquote, the watershed moment of sewer coming is when we start pumping to Sanford. That allows us to get to a hundred percent in our plant. It allows Chatham Park to pump at a hundred percent of what they would pump into the Sanford line. That line is supposed to go in two million gallons per day. And so part of that is the question of if if the town board wishes to do a hundred and ten percent of our capacity, that's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. If you wish, for the sake of of the math, knowing there's some other projects coming down the line, if you want to do a hundred and ten percent of our plant plus Chatham Park's plant, that's the one point three seven three nine hundred. And I will stop there. I know that's a lot of information, and I've I'm trying to simplify this, but it's. My mind's racing a little bit after looking through all these numbers, and so I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any at this current moment. Okay. Cassie, can you scroll down for me, please? Or up, whichever way you it it goes, wherever it goes to page six in your mind. With, uh, that's good right there. Thank you. So again, I tried to put a chart, tried to make it as simple as I can. Obviously, there's a lot of moving pieces with this. And I've tried to represent it accurately. I'll talk a little bit about some of the percentages for the state threshold for flow. I've had some more conversations since I even produced this chart for the meeting this evening. Some of these numbers might be a bit transposed. But again, I think the overall effect is the same. I mean, the numbers that they're transpose is honestly one hundred gallons per day, which is insignificant when you look at the total total project. So again, the the first kind of section we have here separated by black bars is kind of the the projects. It's our current conditions today. Right now, the only active sewer in the town of Pittsburgh is our seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon plant. Our state threshold for flow is eighty thousand gallons, so we are allowed to go to six hundred thousand gallons under our state permit. The total remaining capacity, that's the the seven eighty-four number. So when you see the red, it says negative one eighty-four, seven sixty-two. If you recall from the chart from the previous page, that is the total flow that's currently flowing, which is the four ninety-eight. Plus the hundred and eleven thousand gallons that's in our permitted flow but not tributary. Plus the additional allocated but not flowing and not tributary. So that takes us to seven eighty-four. So when you that that, so if you look at that number, that actually shows us in the red. That's why it's highlighted red. I tried not to be too cute with it, but be rather obvious. But that's negative one eighty-four, seven sixty-two that we'd have to gain in capacity to kind of break even with that. When you look at our a hundred and ten percent policy, again, that's taking the seven fifty times a hundred and ten, which is eight twenty-five. If you look at that seven eighty-four minus eight twenty-five, that's where you get the forty-two thirty-eight. And so when you look at the this, our staff's memos over time, and you look at available capacity. That's where that forty-two thirty-eight is available. That's what you would have if you wanted to adhere to the a hundred and ten percent policy of our existing plan. And so again, it just pushes us further into the red. But if the if the board is is comfortable with that, again, we do think that tributary flows will be substantially less than what they're permitted on paper. But it is kind of a a risk reward type thing of facilitating projects while being a little uncertain about how they're actually going to flow. As we move to the next set there, you'll see the project status condition, that first column on the left. I've tried to identify what the projects are. We have reasonable confidence to believe that when we get to our new discharge permit, the MPDS approved. Allow us to go to one point two four nine million gallons in the Robeson Creek. That the state will allow us to go to ninety percent of our capacity, which again, as you see in the red, takes us from one eighty-four to one oh nine. A far better scenario. But as you see, it does not add really any capacity. And it doesn't change the a hundred and ten percent policy because that number is based off the plant capacity, not based upon available capacity. So all we do is get less in the red because we're allowed to use utilize more of our plant. As we go to the third one, this is where things get interesting, as they say. Where we have the current conditions, the new discharge permit, and the Chatham Park plant's online. And I would say for the record that we do not control the Chatham Park plant. It is really no different than us flowing to Sanford. I mentioned it in this, and I combine it, perhaps dangerously combine it, if you will, because it is in town. Unlike Sanford, where there's there's other agreements in place, and we're going to pump to them. Chatham Park's plant is designed to accommodate development that's in Pittsburgh, primarily Chatham Park. But they are a separate entity from us, and so we really don't control the capacities there. I've talked with Tim Smith about it. Obviously, with his role with with Chatham Park, he's he's certainly the right person to talk to. And he said, sure, we have no issue with with sewer flows going to the plant. However, we do it, they do have an expensive plant, and they have right now a high availability fee. So the perception is that it will be cheaper to flow to our plant than it would be to theirs. And so as we look at how capacities are divvied out, that would be a conversation that we have. So with with this condition here, our plant again remains at seven fifty. Their plant, the phase one of their plant is four hundred and ninety-nine thousand gallons. That gets us to our full amount. Their plant is a non-discharge plant. So they will eventually just pump to us with with clean effluent enough for us to discharge. That allows us to discharge the one point two four nine million. Which is where seven fifty and four ninety-nine combined into Robeson Creek. Again, with with the revised MPDS permit, we're at ninety. They go to eighty percent, which is the state threshold for initial construction of a plant. And so you can see where the numbers fall out there. If we add in their capacity, and again, there's a there's a really big asterisk on this because we don't control the allocation. It actually shows us going back into the green. So we go to two eighty-nine, four thirty-eight. And if you go to the a hundred and ten percent capacity, then we're at five eighty-nine, one thirty-eight, which is a really good number. And so as you'll see later. Two eighty-nine, four thirty-eight is a good solid year's worth of capacity. Five eighty-nine is almost two years' worth of capacity. But again, there's some conversations that have to be had as we go through that. Any questions before we go to the next page?
Chris, I have one. Lot of information already. Do we have the infrastructure in the ground now to go from the Chatham Park line to our plant?
So they are actually putting that in the ground right now. So Chatham Park is working on an interceptor. That is basically going to be the trunk line to get all the the sewer flows through Chatham Park to their plant. And then McKimmon Creed right now, they're working on a series of twelve-inch lines. To get from the Water Recovery Center to our plant. A lot of the conversation we've had, because there's limited flow currently at the Water Recovery Center, essentially no flow. Is that we're worried that it's going to take about four days for for sewage to get the clean effluent, really. The effluent from the treatment of the sewage at the Water Recovery Center to get to our plant. In four days, it'll actually turn septic. So we're actually trying to figure out a way for to integrate that into our discharge. Because we may have to treat it again, which creates problems for us. But when. I'll kind of leave that as an aside conversation, but. Probably the short answer is simply yes. There is a twelve-inch line that'll connect the two plants together so they can flow to ours. We'll have a sampling point, and they can discharge just like we discharge into Robeson Creek. And I.
Go ahead. I think I may have just, it may just flew right by me.
I'm sorry.
And I guess I was a little confused back here on the last page where. Where our increase line, I mean, like four one twenty-one was going up to one point two. From Chatham Park. And I was on interpretation that their plant was on our permit to Hall River.
So they're not going to Hall River. That's a separate permit altogether. We have a one point one, one point nine one million gallon per day discharge in the Hall River.
Right.
There there is no infrastructure in place to send a discharge into the Hall River. We have it approved. But there's no, there's no infrastructure in place.
Meaning a a new plant, correct?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. In the future, it'll it'll be on the books for the town to potentially do something into the Hall River. But right now, there's no plant that's set up. And I'll say our cheaper option at this point is to work with Sanford on getting discharging towards them. Pumping than it would be to to build a new plant for the one point nine one million gallons.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Chris, I've got a question. Comes up with your last statement about, I think, four days. For the treated effluent to come from the Chatham Park plant to the discharge point at our plant into Robeson Creek. And you mentioned that it would conceivably be septic at that point and possibly need retreatment. One of the things that we are relying on to Chatham Park plant to do is to provide reuse quality water for three M. If it's arriving at our site and it's no longer used quality. How's, how are we managing the, how do we think we're going to manage the three M contract?
So our ability right now to serve three M is 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 solid. Pittsburgh water or Pittsburgh wastewater can serve three M. Ultimately, Chatham Park will have to supplant that as we pump directly to Sanford, because again. With the Sanford project, our our wastewater plant becomes a large pump where there is no treatment. There's no treatment of sewer. And we just simply pump raw sewage to Sanford, and they treat it at their big Buffalo Creek plant. Right. By the time that that comes online, Chatham Park should have the necessary flows to fulfill our two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day of potential demand to three M. And so they'll have to to ramp up, and that will have to be fulfilled first before anything else is sent downhill.
So it's a low flow condition that creates the time lapse from one plant to the other?
It's it's really when we get kickstarted. I I think a couple of years and a couple of towns to the to the Chatham Park plant, and we'll be fine. It's just the initial condition of what do we do with it because. Our plant will be, you know, pretty well, from a capacity, pretty well full perspective. And so we don't really have the ability to treat sewage ourselves, then take on what's become sewage again from Chatham Park. And so there's a lot of conversations about how we make sure that doesn't happen. And.
Yeah, okay.
One of the ways to do that is is to get their plant flow quicker so that it doesn't turn septic. It can basically go into our our system. For those familiar with ours, we have equalization basins at our plant that create clean wastewater. We have a UV system that that I'll say treats it very quickly at the very end of that before it discharges. We will have, we have monitoring points for our existing wastewater before it goes into Robeson Creek. We'll have a separate one for the wastewater coming from the Water Recovery Center. As long as that's fine, it'll go through the same UV and then get discharged. We have ability to to figure out who's as good and who's as bad if it ever ends up that way. But as long as we get flow with the Water Recovery Center, we should be fine. It's just kind of in the in the initial kickoff where we might go septic. We're trying to figure out a good path around that. Cassie, will you scroll down for me, please, or up again, whichever. And I would note on this one as well, because you'll see the word applying. I do want to clarify that applying means basically that we apply for the permit or Chatham Park applies for the permit, and it's been graded. That's probably less than clear in how this is currently written. But I do want to state for the record that Chatham Park applying for the permit basically means that there's something else to obtain. That they've applied for it and they've received it. If if you're applying for it, you really don't get the capacity. And so I just want to make that clear for for those listening in or the or our board itself. And here here's where I think the numbers might be a little transposed. But again, when you're talking difference between four ninety-nine and five hundred and swapping from eighty to ninety, you're you're talking about a hundred gallons. So I think the overall impact it remains the same. So with this iteration here, we're now fast forward to January of twenty twenty-two. We've got our existing condition, status quo. We've got our new discharge permit to one point two four nine million. We now have the Chatham Park plant online, and Chatham Park, their plant is actually designed to go to one million gallons. And so they would have the ability to go to nine ninety-nine. And so with this, this is where Chatham Park has has. We're presuming they've increased their capacities, and so now we basically have. One point seven five or one point seven four nine million within the town of Pittsburgh. Again, our plant's at ninety percent. I think the four ninety-nine is probably ninety, and the five hundred is probably eighty. But again, the numbers are only a hundred difference. As you can see, the. As you can see, the total capacity remaining in the green would be seven thirty-nine. You'll notice now that there is a catch-up. And so the capacity remaining, if we catch up to a hundred and ten percent, that is presuming that at some point you have to pay the piper. You can't be at a hundred and ten percent forever because there's no state policy that allows you to go to a hundred and ten percent. And so with this, this is, this is presuming that you can't go to a hundred and ten percent forever. So if we want to bring everything and catch back up and which means that anything we've granted over a hundred percent or ninety percent that we now have to quote-unquote pay the piper for, our capacity increase is only a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred. And so that's, that would be our available capacity at that date and time. Does that make sense? Maybe. Mr. Messick gave me a rise smile, so I'll take that as full consent from everyone else. The this next one we have here, this is the one where everyone says, yay, the Sanford line is finally active. This is, I'll call it the January first, twenty twenty-three condition, which we're about two years out from. Again, what we hope to have with Sanford line is we're working on this project where we are going through, obviously with the E R E I D, we have to secure some easements. Mr. Messick and I have a conversation about that tomorrow, trying to facilitate all the things with this project. We're touching on it almost weekly, if not multiple times a week. We hope to have the project out to bid in, in early twenty twenty-one and hopefully underway for construction in the summer of twenty-one. And we anticipate eighteen-month construction. So that's where the January first, twenty twenty-three comes in in terms of a date. As you see here, we are, as part of that project, Sanford, it's a forced name, but it's also, it's called Town Wastewater Improvements because we turn our, our treatment plant into a big pump as well as a couple of pumps that go along the way between the fourteen miles between us and the city of Sanford's plant. And so you'll see at that point, we go to a hundred percent. Because when you look at the capacities, when we go to Sanford, their discharge permit into the deep river, our, our seven fifty is just a portion of theirs. So whether they're at eighty percent or ninety percent or whatever number the state permits them, our seven fifty will be well within that threshold. So we'll actually be, be able to go to a hundred percent. From a town perspective, with our infrastructure, this is as good as it gets. That we don't have any other projects currently on the books besides obviously a little bit of Anna and a couple of other projects that are, that are nominal in nature. But this is really where we, we get our maximum capacity out of our current plant. So we go to a hundred percent. And I believe there's a typo because the, it should be seven fifty and not six seventy-five. I believe that's a typo from a copy and paste error. So I apologize for that.
Seven fifty?
Yes, sir. Because a hundred, a hundred percent of seven fifty, I believe is still seven fifty. I think that's my fault for a copy and paste error as I was trying to put this together. The, the Water Recovery Center, the four ninety-nine, again, I think that's actually ninety instead of eighty. I believe the five hundred below it is actually eighty instead of ninety. Again, you're talking the difference of, of one hundred gallons as a net between those two. Cassie, if you'll scroll for me, please. Cassie, can you scroll, please? There we go. And then you'll see there too, that Chatham Park has a pump to Sanford of one point two five million. And so with that, again, the line to Sanford is a two million gallon per day line where we'll have flow that will come from the Water Recovery Center. There'll be flow that, that comes from the town at, at some point. Again, Chatham Park is, is paying for the vast majority of the line to Sanford. And so we have seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons of capacity in that line. They have one point two five, making the two million gallons. So they have reserved that amount of flow. Again, I think there's, there's probably some latitude for some conversations about how that flow is done. And you can see how it's effect on our numbers. It is a great amount of sewer. But again, it's a large amount. When you look at the green and the orange there, the two, two point oh six and the one point four seven five, those are, those are big numbers and that's, that's a lot of capacity. But that's a lot of capacity tied into Chatham Park's infrastructure. And so how, how we are able to negotiate and work with Chatham Park on, now granted, they're going to be our biggest sewer user. So I mean, they need a lot of sewer with that, but we also are going to have other projects that are going to demand sewer. So what, whether we're able to, to work with Chatham Park, and I, I believe conversations have gone well so far, at least conceptually. Certainly, they've been welcomed to conversations and, and they've been a tremendous help in helping me map this out in, in us being able to, to potentially pony up and buy more capacity. I know I've already asked a question about can we split the line and go, you know, one million gallons for us, one million for them. They've been welcome to us entertaining that. Certainly, there's, there's a dollar amount factor with that. They're not just going to give that to us. They're going to expect us to, to split it fifty-fifty at that point. There's also an opportunity for us to look at other things with, with the Sanford line. And I'll touch on those in a few moments, but a-again, you can, the Sanford line does provide a tremendous amount of capacity. And, and later in this memo, as you've probably seen, we're thinking we're going to need about two hundred and sixty thousand gallons a year to meet our demands. So when you start looking at two point oh six four or even the catch-up policy at one point four five, dividing two sixty into either one of those numbers provides us a, a many numbers of years of capacity. Cassie, if you'll scroll a little bit more, please. This final one here is, is very similar to the one before. We've added an extra year. Sanford's now flowing. We've got all that. Now, we've, we've actually, we're pumping all of our sewer or vast majority of it to Sanford. We've got two million gallons going to them. But we still retain a one point two four nine million gallon discharge into Robeson Creek. This is where Chatham Park would go in. They would apply for additional capacity to maximize that MPDS permit. And so they would be adding two hundred and fifty thousand gallons to eighty percent. And, and again, I apologize that the numbers are kind of moving around because I just had that copy and paste error show up again and again with that six seventy-five instead of seven fifty. So I, I appreciate you bearing with that and the, and having to deal with this in a theoretical sense unless looking at the numbers. But as you, as you scroll all the way down, Cassie, please. Again, you'll, you'll see the numbers and I think this is, this is an important bottom chart here. When you look at years of capacity is if we stay in the green, which means we don't use a hundred and ten percent, we're looking at eight point nine years of capacity. If you look at the orange, if we have, even we have to play catch-up, that's six point six four years of capacity. Now, it'll be my recommendation to the town that we stay on top of this and we find a way to make that number be fifty or seventy-five. I certainly won't, you know, I plan to be in Pittsburgh a very long time, God willing and y'all willing. But at the same time, I will, I want all my successors for, for quite a number of generations not to have to worry about this. I hope that they can look back on this kind of EKG of time and see that blip of sewer problems and say, thank goodness that board and, and the staff at that time were able to navigate this and we don't have to worry about that anymore. So again, I'll take six point six four years right now over what we have. But again, I, I would like us to continue to stay on top of this, look to find more numbers. And I'll, and I'll say with those numbers provided and you see the two hundred and sixty thousand and a little bit of the math above it, the five hundred homes at three sixty, we, we probably will do more homes than that in a given year. Chatham Park, I think if they had their druthers, they want to do five to seven hundred in a given year. And then we'll have other homes obviously develop at that same time. And so I think the three sixty is probably a good number because we've already seen there's been a number of flow reductions. And so when you look at that first year paper flow, Chatham Park's already looking at numbers that are a hundred and eight to two hundred gallons per day for what we would consider typically to be three sixty at the state level. I think we're going to continue to work with developers, Chatham Park, others as well on these flow reductions to make our numbers pencil out on paper in the first year. Knowing that the tributary flow actually probably ended up being even less than those reductions. And then the eighty thousand gallons of commercial, that's just a, a shot in the dark number of what we generally think we might develop. That's a fair bit of, of allocation. To put that in perspective, the, the Lowe's Foods, the gas station and the hotel that Mosaic's asking for is about twenty-seven thousand gallons. So if you think about that times three every single year, I, I think that's a pretty conservative number on an average basis. You know, if you look at it over a decade, you know, looking at eight hundred thousand gallons worth of commercial, that's, that's a lot of commercial activity. And so again, the number is, is most certainly inaccurate. We, we hope that it's comparable to what it would be, but just to put a number on paper, that's what we chose to go with. So again, I, I think our realities, and I'll kind of wrap up my summary and be happy to answer any questions. And, and what I'll do is also, I'll get this chart tightened up from a number perspective, make sure I don't have any typos or, or copy and paste errors. I'll get that back out and I'll get it back on the website for everybody to look at as well. Is we really don't have very much project-wise to increase our sewer capacity because our plant is what, what it is. Right now, we're eighty percent of seven fifty. We're looking to go to ninety. The Sanford line will allow us to go to a hundred. But again, we're looking at a hundred and ten percent capacities of eight twenty-five. We're looking at, you know, allocations that are already been provided at seven eighty-four. So we need to consider other types of projects to increase our capacity, be it purchasing more capacity in the Sanford line, making it one million to one million. I would highly recommend that we, as soon as the Sanford line goes live or starts going with, for construction, that we immediately pivot to an IBT, which is the Inter Basin Transfer. That line is actually going to be sized for three million gallons a day. We can upfit the impellers of the pumps and take it with very, very little cost in the grand scheme of things, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars and take that two million gallons worth of flow and make it three million gallons worth of flow to the city of Sanford. And so again, if you look at adding a million more gallons, you know, that's, that's four years worth of capacity for us. You know, we've got other things we can look at long-term. The Chatham Park plant is designed to go to a million. I've, I've been informed that they have the land area and, and really kind of the infrastructure in place to potentially take it up to four, four and a half million gallons. Obviously, that's not going to be inexpensive and it'll be some projects we look at long-term. But as we look at infrastructure, both ours, the Water Recovery Center, the city of Sanford, potentially buying more capacity and running parallel lines to the city of Sanford long-term. I, I think there's going to be a lot of, you know, reclaimed water creativity, which I think would be fantastic for everyone to do a better use of reclaim and not having to potentially irrigate with hunk of water. There's a lot of concerns with that. There's a lot of different strategies I think we're going to look at, we need to, and I think there's some creative things that we would like to do as well to try to meet these demands. Because as I've, I've shared with this with the mayor, my goal with staff is not necessarily to influence the board in terms of its development preference. My job as staff is to provide you that silver platter that says, board, would you like to develop? If you would like to, you have sewer capacity. I don't like to come to a board and say, unfortunately, I think you're going to have to, to provide a bunch of caveat and condition on this so you can't develop. Now, we know every four years or every two years, the board's going to flip over and there'll be different preferences in terms of pro-development. You know, people against development, people in between the bits development, people write for this development, not that development. That's, that's the nature of politics and elected officials, it ebbs and flows. What I would like to provide as staff is give you the option that with our existing board, with our board five years from now, our board twenty years from now, that you at least have the option to do something. And, and so my goal was to provide you the, the pathway forward, obviously in conjunction with y'all and other stakeholders, that if, that we're going to have the sewer in place that we can safely develop if we would like to and we can discharge that sewer without any harm of going through those violations. We don't exceed our plant capacity. We're not putting anything into streams to give you all the full autonomy to really make your policy decisions based upon the merits of development and not necessarily whether or not we have sewer.
Chris, thank you. This was a lot of work and I, I think it's very informative. I know it is a lot to process, but I think it's logical and makes sense.
Well, thank you. Again, I apologize for the numbers being a little bit off. Again, a copy and paste error and I, I, nobody's more frustrated than, than, than me on that because I can't stand that type of stuff. I try to be a stickler of making sure things are clear and, and that just annoys me. So I, I apologize for that, but I hope the rest of my rambling helps some in mapping this out. And again, I'll be happy to revise that and get that back to the board. So you feel like the numbers are, are accurate, but I think, I think the logic remains the same regardless of the numbers being a bit skewed.
Yep, agreed.
Chris, just clarification. These are all discharge numbers, not treatment numbers, correct?
Correct.
So any, any reuse or any additional reuse would be a one-to-one addition of, of capacity in, in these?
Correct. So our, our discharge, if, if we can find an alternative user. So let's say that, that we, we find an ability to take a hundred thousand gallons of, of effluent and make it reclaim-eligible and we can irrigate with it. That gives us a hundred thousand gallons of sewer. Because we've now displaced what would typically have been discharged into, let's say, Robeson Creek. And now it's going to be dispersed elsewhere. And so our discharge into Robeson Creek is actually saved by that equal amount.
But that doesn't allow, that doesn't provide additional treatment capacity at the plant.
Correct.
So the plant can't now take that hundred thousand and treat it twice and send it once to Robeson and once to a field. The plant still remains at its capacity. But another such as, well, some other treatment facility can now take that space and discharge to the stream.
Yes. Thank you. That's a great point with that is that if we, if we found a reclaim user for seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons, it doesn't mean we can, we can have one point five. We can only treat what we can treat. That's a great point. Thank you.
Yeah, I wish it were the other way.
More comments, questions for Chris or?
Yes, there, there are some questions that I believe have answered, but that have been chatted from the public. Virginia Penley asks, wouldn't chlorination work at the new plant for that flow that is going septic in the four days from there to us?
Perhaps, but there would have to be, there would have to be some infrastructure place so that we could actually do that. Right now, the, the way the infrastructure is set up. And again, it's, it's kind of a moving target right now because we, we understand this is, this is occurring. And we've been working with McKimmon Creed, who's working on behalf of, of, of press and development in Chatham Park Investors of how to correct this. But is how to, if, if it does turn septic, what are the measures we need in place in order to make sure that when we discharge it and we take it through our UV, we don't want to co-mingle. That's the last thing I want to do because if we have a, a violation, then we don't know who it was. And then where everybody's pointing fingers. And so that's why we want to have two, two sampling points to monitor. I think that's a great point. I, I think, hopefully the engineers have contemplated that. But, but I appreciate the, the suggestion on chlorination. I'll, I'll bring that up when I talk with Jamie, who's our ORC at Sewer Plant and see what McKimmon Creed has been talking with him, Mr. Petit about.
The, the, the final question, I think, is yet unanswered by your presentation. Mr. Kennedy was again from Virginia. Mr. Kennedy was again from Virginia Pendley. Couldn't Chatham Park, working with the town, still discharge one point two five million into Robeson Creek?
Yes, and that's ultimately the the long term goal is is that when we have two million going to Sanford, there will be one point two five that still goes into Robeson Creek. And so that'll bring the overall capacity to three point two five for sewer, both one going to Robeson Creek and one getting pumped Sanford.
Now, Chris, I think that also leaves another one point nine seven one that can get discharged into the hall for our NPDS permit because we've got a three point two two discharge limit between Robeson and the hall.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. There's no Yeah, so right now there's no infrastructure to get it to a hall and there's really no project that's been identified. Now, I think that we will identify one. After looking through these numbers, we'll we'll look at something probably similar to what we're we're looking at with Sanford in some regard about, okay, how can we utilize that if needed? At least to to run the numbers and say, hey, is that project feasible right now? If we if we say no, let's continue to go to Sanford, then it's a project on the books that we can utilize at any point in the future if we wish to go that route. But I think it would be worth our while to figure out what that project would be, how we would envision that project to maximize that discharge permit in both Robeson Creek and to the hall.
And to Sanford.
Yep. Right. In in Sanford, they've got, they they've got quite a bit of discharge. I mean, their plant, they're going to be able to go, I think it's thirty three million gallons of sewer. And so their discharge into the deep river is substantial. And so our ability to to tie into their discharge and and potentially future projects of of purchasing capacity, not just being a customer, but being actually a a proportionate owner kind of in capacity at the Sanford plant is probably our in our our future. Of when they look at going to an upgrade of going from twelve to twenty four, from twenty four to thirty, the town of Pittsburgh may want to buy three, six, how many other million gallons in that plant to reserve that for future projects so that we know that we have that discharge. And that's and that's part of the, you know, as, you know, kind of going back to what we've approved on the consent agenda, obviously, we discussed it. But with the Pittsburgh Sanford Utility Alliance, these are the types of things that we want to look at, both from a water and wastewater perspective. We know that us in Sanford have a lot of partnership eligibility, if you will. And so part of that project that was approved now on the consent agenda is looking at this from a water and wastewater perspective and how we can leverage both enterprise funds from a regional perspective of creating that good economy of scale. Doing this alone is 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 more expensive than not. And if Sanford has the ability to discharge and they like us to be as part of their discharge because it diversifies their system. And also, there's there's the benefit for us because of what the EPA requirements on discharge. Our plant is is needs way too much work in order to meet those EPA requirements. So us being able to discharge Sanford is really one of the big coups of that. It's not just a capacity perspective. It's also the environmental regulations around our plant. And so it makes more more dollar sense for us to go to Sanford rather than upgrading our plant, trying to make EPA standards. We'll spend more money chasing capacity and not actually achieve any by doing that. And so it allows us to bump up a little bit, but it also has a great environmental impact on our ability to discharge, which I don't think you can overlook with what we're doing.
So the thing that's most helpful to me, Mr. Kennedy, and I thank you very much again, I echo other board members' comments on on the magnitude of this work and and your care with it. It's it's really clear that you definitely do understand it very, very thoroughly now, and I greatly appreciate that. It's, as I understand it, we're talking about a a temporal issue. It's really about time. And although I I I understand these are, these are not precise dates, but down as as a kind of a, as you've, I think you've explained it as a kind of a ballpark date of April of twenty twenty one. The U-Banks Road or Chatham Park Water Recovery Center coming online more fully. And recognizing that there's two different, in your memo, you described them as basins. I think of them as two different septic tributaries. That there is, that's not really the the, we're not really in the green as of April of twenty twenty one. Is that right? The old part of
I think that's correct. I do think that date is pretty accurate. I'll start with that. I think the we're we're hopeful that the interceptor line, that the main trunk line, that's going to feed the water recovery center. That's supposed to be done in February of twenty one. The project is actually almost ready to go to CO. Super ironic and Jeff is probably laughing in the background right now because he knows what I'm about to say. The part of reason they can't get a CO is because they don't have ability to have sewer, so they can't even flush the toilet at the wastewater plant. It might be the most ironic thing I've ever heard in my life, but it it just is what it is. They're talking about putting a septic tank at the wastewater plant. Trying to work around it, but anyway, I just thought that was too funny not to mention, but we'll we'll be working through that with them and making sure they get up and running. But I think April first is an accurate date. But the understanding, you know, we just had the Griffin Farms project. There's no infrastructure really in place to get the Griffin Farms sewer to the water recovery center. As everyone knows, sewer runs on gravity and when it's best done. Otherwise, you have a pump station or a lift station that lifts it up to a point of gravity and then it falls again. Us being able to look at this and so why it's it's probably simplistic to just write it down on paper and say, hey, here's our capacity with the combined of, and I'll say everything but Sanford. It's it's a bit of a missed on because there are kind of separate basins or tributaries that feed that sewer and understanding where it comes from. And so I think part of the policy decision for us, and I I know it's going to come up when we talk about the Mosaic and Northwood MUPD request, is how's a town want to approach that? Because there are projects, you know, I'll say vineyards in particular, Mosaic, you know, the infrastructure should be in place for them to flow to the water recovery center. But according to the numbers, it's cheaper to go to our plant. So any developer, Chatham Park or not, is going to want to go to our plant first because it's cheaper to flow there. So that creates kind of the the awkwardness of trying to figure out how does the town have customers? Because Chatham Park is in in the town of Pittsburgh as well, just like Griffin Farms or any other project is. And how do we say, no, you must go to this plant and pay a higher fee? Because you're forced to go to a private, private plant right now. And so that's really where this creates the friction. And and us being able to buy out Chatham Park at forty million dollars isn't feasible at this moment. A number of years from now, I think I think that might be reasonable, as crazy as that may seem. As as we see the growth that's anticipated, as the town seeks to have more autonomy in its water and wastewater infrastructure, I think we we could look at a scenario where we take over that plant. Now, I I don't know what all that would entail. I don't know the dollar amounts per se. And with that, maybe it's, you know, some of the upgrades that we account for and then we eventually saturate it and take over, take it over, something like that. In kind services, I'm not sure. But until we have autonomy of it, it's going to be hard for us to factor that in. But I think that's going to be the policy decision that this board's going to have to wrestle with is when someone comes in from Chatham Park and they say, hey, I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. And I don't want to pay this exorbitant rate potentially for sewer, what's the what's the board going to do? Because we can say, sure, you're good to go as long as you float to the water recovery center. And now maybe that's, maybe it's as simple as that and they make the decision whether to build or not, because you've been identified in that basin. And and so I I think that's going to be the dance. And I don't know that I have a I have a good, solid answer for how to deal with that right now. I think I think we identify, we try to find a way to mitigate that as best we can. I think Chatham Park is receptive to conversation about it. But I know at the same time, they've got forty million dollars in liability of the plant that isn't running right now that they would like not to be on the hook for. And the town, as as we all know, doesn't have forty million dollars to cut them a check and say, cool, it's our capacity now. Don't worry about it. So I I think that's the critical issue that we're going to have to discuss because otherwise we don't have that much capacity because we're, our plant is saturated.
Yeah. Okay, so again, back to the question of time. It while while, you know, just looking at the red and the green and 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 the numbers on these tables on these charts, it it might look like in April of twenty twenty one, things are alleviated for town. But because of the spatial distinction between their tributary basin and our tributary basin, that that we don't have a whole lot of leeway coming into play in twenty twenty one unless we embark on another capital project to have a pipeline pump up East Street and over the hill toward U-Banks. Is that right?
Correct. We, I mean, the only way to really to to try to shortcut it, if you will, is if we basically had everyone flow to our plant like they normally would. And we take some of the infrastructure, either parallel it or use one of the lines that's that's supposed to be flowing to our plant. Ultimately, what you'd have to do is is have, because the water recovery center is a non-discharge plant. Basically, you would put a pump, it'd flow gravity to us like you normally would. We would then pump it uphill to U-Banks, the water recovery center, and then they would treat it and it would come back now as effluent back to us. And then that that would basically be the same as going straight to the water recovery center in order of kind of that would be a normalization or equalization of basins where it would merge the two together. Where the town of Pittsburgh becomes one large basin rather than two distinct ones flowing to two different plants.
And if we remain if if the board remains, continues to have confidence in our prior decision to go to one hundred and ten percent capacity. Then what we're talking about is basically for the next half a year, forty thousand gallons of capacity on paper. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Notwithstanding the conversation we've just had about new infrastructure and and pumping poop from here to there, legally, we're, we have this much capacity remaining. Is that correct?
I will probably refrain from saying or commenting on the legalness of it.
Engineering.
I I will say the state allows us to go to eighty or ninety percent until we go to Sanford. Our board has, through, I'll say, educated experience and understanding how tributary flow works. And and knowing that there are other measures that are going to be coming online, either through our plant or Chatham Park's plant, and understanding that tributary flow will likely be substantially less or markedly less than the paper flow will be. I three hundred and sixty gallons per day actually ends up being a hundred and fifty gallons per day. That at a hundred and ten percent of our capacity, that we will never reach a state threshold where it becomes a concern, where we're basically inundating the plant, we're overflowing it, and we're going through notice of violations. That that the hundred and ten percent policy is is basically built upon that framework. Again, that's, that is my understanding of it. This this policy predates myself and the board has been a part of that. So if I'm misinterpreting that, someone please correct me. But as I've, as I've researched it and as I've had conversations, that is my understanding of the hundred and ten percent capacity, that it's there to keep the ball moving, but knowing that we will never actually get beyond it because tributary will never will always be realized at a lesser amount than what that hundred and ten percent number is, which is eight twenty five.
Chris, that's, that's accurate. We do have a lot of paper flow, but our tributary flow is relatively you know, sixty percent, sixty six percent. Yeah, that's, that's, you know, substantially less than the plant can process before we start discharging or having upsets at the plant. So, yeah, that that was a calculated risk that the the board took. And I think it's the wise one.
And I think just a part of that policy is us, is incumbent upon staff to be really diligent about our tributary flow. And tracking that over time. One, we need to do it anyway because it it helps with our overall capacity. But we also need to have a keen eye on it. So if for whatever reason we go, holy smoke, someone's actually flowing it in excess of their paper flow. We understand that and we can make sure that we don't end up in a notice violation situation.
But Chris's study also shows you that six to nine years is not long, especially when you're taking eighteen months to two years to build something, plus God knows how many years to get it approved. You need to start thinking about phase two pretty soon before we even get to Sanford.
Yeah. You mean phase three?
Yeah, Mr. Messick, that that's, that's probably the, if not the key point, that's might be one B. Is in order for us, again, my desire to give you that silver platter of options and have you have you the ability to to appropriate sewer and allocate sewer as you see fit, if you so choose to do so. We've got to stay on top of this. Every single year, we have to have a project that that increases capacity. Now, again, as Mr. Messick said, they take time. This Sanford line has taken forever in the grand scheme of things, seemingly. So we have to be diligent on it. We have to make it a priority. And we have to to be able to partner with those around us and say, hey, who's willing to help us? I think, you know, I think we've had a lot of good conversations with Chatham Park. Again, whether we split that line to one million and one million, I know Mr. Smith has has been, at least he hasn't shut me down completely when I've asked, and he's been very polite about working with us about sewer. And again, I'm appreciative of that. Sanford, it looks like they're going to be a great partner for us. And and they will, they will consistently be involved in a lot of our things, and I think we'll show that more as we go through the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days when we bring that report back from Freezing Nichols with our Sanford Utility Alliance to show how we can partner even more. So I think, and obviously, Wooton's been a great partner. So I think as we go through some of these, right now, it's kind of, okay, let's get the Chatham Park plant online. Let's get the Sanford plant or the Sanford line, you know, to the LGC, let's get it under construction. That there's no, there's no breathing room with any of this, though. We might have some of those things to get this thing moving, but as soon as we get one thing done, we're going to have to pivot to the next project. It's going to be pivoting to IBT. It's going to be pivoting to, you know, when we get water from someone else to, you know, even increase an inter basin transfer or remove the inter basin transfer rule. There's going to be a bunch of options. The thing I've I've appreciated most honestly with Pittsburgh is the the appetite for creativity. There's a lot of unique problems, but I I think we've got the right people in place. We've got Um, there's a lot of unique problems, um, but I, I think we've got the right people in place. We've got, um you know, just, just a great appetite to do things in an innovative and creative manner that others will just dismiss. Um, so I think that's been a really good um, thing that I, I would say as an attribute to Pittsburgh is if anybody can figure it out, I think we can because we've got the, we've got the want to and the desire to do it. So that's a compliment both to our board, but also to our citizenry who is engaged and wants to see, see things done. Not just to see them done, but to see them done well and to see them done with some conscience to them. So I'm, I'm really encouraged that we'll get there. It's just a bit frustrating right now.
Chris, if we can get uh another million gallons via IBT for a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um, I'll vote on that right now. Um, uh, that's, you know, one of the most cost-effective um um capacities I've, I've heard of. And I really think also that we have an opportunity, while not to the volume of a million gallons a day, but maybe a hundred thousand is chasing after our INI. And it has the, um, you know, there's no reason for us to be spending money to treat stormwater uh, through our sewer treatment plant. And not to say that, uh, you know, it'd be healthier for the environment if in fact we weren't leaching into the ground, uh, some of the effluent. So I think I, I and I, if we can pay attention to that, it's going to be a real asset to the town.
Yeah, I, I completely agree. And, you know, I think in the grand scheme of things, it's the compounding effect of it. It's, it's not that one individual manhole rehab or cleanout cap replacement. Or, you know, outright, you know, take a vitrified clay pipe and make it, you know, SDR thirty-five. It's, it's really the compounding effect of all those things that on an annual basis says, hey, we picked up seventy-five hundred gallons of sewer this year. Well, guess what? Lowe's Foods only six thousand gallons a year, a day. So if we pick up seventy-five hundred through INI, we've just picked up an entire Lowe's Foods, which is substantial. Um, so as we, as we look at it, again, while it may seem like we're, you know, uh, driving at it with small nails will add up to it eventually where INI will make a significant impact. And it's my desire that we, that we get that going as soon as we possibly can. I've, I've talked with Mr. Porte about it. We've been talking with Hydrostructures about it. We have the sewer AIA done, which is the Asset Infrastructure Assessment. We had that done in twenty eighteen. We've got kind of a, an AMP that's going to get done with that. And so with that asset management plan, it's getting all those things attended to. Because it's, it really is, you wouldn't believe what, just putting one cleanout cap or making sure someone's downspout isn't run to the sewer. Uh, it makes, it makes a big difference. So to, for this, for the sake of everyone's time, I appreciate your patience to listen to me tonight about this. Um, I appreciate your patience and allowing me to take a couple of months to, to kind of put this together. Again, I'm going to button the numbers up and, and put that back on the website and back to the board. Um, what would you like is your next step with this? I, I, I think we need to have this as a probably consistent agenda item, maybe not every single meeting.
Chris, excuse me just a minute. Pamela, I'm going to have to leave for a second if you'd take over.
Okay.
But what would the board want to see next? Be it at our December fourth meeting, fourteenth meeting, be it at one of the meetings in January. Again, uh, my job is to provide you all the information that you can be successful with and information and as you create policy. Um, what would you like to see next? Now that you've kind of seen this initial um information?
I think it might be helpful to see a a ranking, I guess, of, of low hanging fruit that we've talked about, whether it be INI or uh inter-basin transfer reuse increase. Some of those things we might be able to do more immediately uh to, to gain capacity uh in some way. And, and then you know, that, I guess that would look further out to what, what projects we need to get started on now, essentially like the next sewer treatment plan.
Okay. Yeah, what, what I can do with that is
Kind of, but
What was it?
I think it's Sorry, uh, I think it's really here in this document, um, but maybe just a a list to pick from uh easy.
Yeah. Wha- what I can do is create a kind of a, the, you know, here are the main projects. But here are some other options that we can do. Again, try to maybe put some dollar amounts or some timeframes with them. Um, obviously, cheaper and shorter times are probably the lowest hanging fruit. And then as you, as you negotiate from there, if it's more expensive or more timely, the, the more inaccessible it is. Um, but certainly we'll try to attend to all of them. Um, and I, I can provide those options to the board and that can provide you like more comfort. And when, when we might think of those, so we can basically take probably the basic information that we have here and expound upon it and say, okay, well, if we do this, now we've added a time, we've added capacity, here's what, here's what that would look like. Um, I can certainly provide that.
And also in reference to the NP, NPDS permit getting approved. You have indicated on here is January twenty twenty one. I think we need to definitely have our eyes on that. And then the next thing you indicate is April first twenty twenty one. So probably need to watch those really, really closely to make sure that we're getting where we want to be and that those things are getting approved or what's causing them not to get approved, whatever. Just keep a close watch on all of that for sure.
Ye- yes, ma'am. I mean, the, the discharge permit, the NPDS. Um, uh, Mr. Messick and I, Mr. Messick has done yeoman's work on that. Uh, uh, in addition with Wooton and uh Mr. Scavara and uh Mr. Eagle and, and, and Lenny of other folks. Um, I think that, that number is realistic. Um, certainly, certainly we've you know, knock on all the wood you can find. Um, but we've run into hiccups before and it seems like, you know, the probability of something happening is, is likely than not. But part of the thing that we're dealing with the Sanford line is we're trying to get the authorization to construct. And one of the things holding us up is the state saying we have to get our new NPDS permit before they give us that. So there's certainly an interrelation between this, but I would say that the January number uh, or the date for the discharge permit, I think is very realistic. And based on, as I understand the construction, I talked with Brian Blake from McKimmon Creed um, about the, the line and getting everything set up at the Chatham Park plant. I think April's consistent with that as well. But again, as, as we get closer, you know, there's always that little bit of creep. And we'll go, oh, well, it's not actually January, it's February, or it's not April, it's May. Um, we'll keep a keen on that, but that's a great point. We'll, we'll try to stay attentive to that and keep the board equally informed about where we stand with those items.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, if you're willing to take a stab at it, I'd greatly appreciate you putting this in a, a graph. Like the one from Wooton Engineers uh that uh was shared. Gosh, I can't remember the date, maybe back uh, not a grant chart, but a, an actual line graph. On the um the Y-axis, it was um gallons per day and on the X-axis, it was um time. Years. Sent you that on October twenty-third?
Yeah.
Or maybe I just mentioned it. No, I linked it there. So, yeah, and, and this, this list of, of options. You know, acknowledging that there's an awful lot of caveats and any dates that we put down would be uh, highly speculative, if not fiction. At this stage, we're just, we're just um eyeballing things. Um, but it might be helpful to have those things on that same chart and that would be the reason to put it on a graphical depiction of, of the future.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to at least take a stab at it and see if it, if it meets y'all's needs. Um, again, it, it's a lot of moving pieces with individual projects, different, different plants, capacity, state laws. Um, I, I'm trying to boil it down and anything that I can do to assist with y'all's consumption of it. Um, I'm, I'd be more than happy to, to at least take a stab at and hopefully be successful with. Um, so when I, when I update the, the information to add in, maybe the, the other alternatives or potential alternatives. I'll, I'll try to make a more graphical depiction of that. Um, because I, again, I myself, I'm, I'm kind of a learner that way too, where if I can see it, I can visualize it and comprehend a little better. So I, I will uh take a stab at that and uh get something to y'all. So the, hopefully that both the board and, and the public at large can, can better understand where we, where we stand with this.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Kennedy, for that report, it was excellent. I will have to say this was very enlightening. And I really liked the fact that you outlined it like that so we could really understand it more thoroughly. So if there are not any other questions, let's move on to old business number two.
Would it be okay to take a five-minute break?
If that's what you all want to do.
I would very much like to do that.
So you need a motion?
For a four-minute break. Uh, four-minute break, fine.
Seconds. All in favor? Aye.
All right.
Okay.
How minor?
Uh, probably about three minutes into a four-minute break.
Oh, good. I got a minute.
Well, Jim, did you come back and we were all gone?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
We didn't even start.
Okay. So uh, we turned from our break, I take it, and where were we?
Yeah, there.
So we were at uh
We just
This was Chris's report.
We just finished and started old business number two.
Okay, we'll continue then.
I believe everyone's back. That's correct. Yeah, I'm playing Hollywood Squares real quick to make sure I've got all my people.
Not sure that are back.
Shit.
Did she leave early? Chris, I don't think Teresa, Teresa's back.
That's fine. I'm going to be presenting this one.
Okay. Are we ready then? You want to proceed, Chris, or are you going to wait?
We're good.
Go ahead then, we'll.
I'm here. Doesn't have any more agenda items. She, she left.
Okay. Alright, so. You then, Chris, present this.
Okay. So what we've got on old business number two, again, we wanted to have this follow up with my report on the sewer, is to go over the Eco, Towne Park Partners LLC and Eco Northwood MUPD. They have requested what amounts to functionally the remainder of our capacity of the 110% capacity, which as we recall was just over 40,000 gallons. Again, this was, this was a request. Obviously, if you read the memo, Mosaic and Northwood, they needed about 300,000 additional gallons per day to go to their full build out. So really, the, the request was more of a prompt for us to, to map this out, which was kind of the part of the reason for us to go through what we just went through with my conversation a few moments ago. But also to, to look at obviously their requests and see what we can provide, if anything, at this time. So again, you see the numbers there. You will see planning staff has kindly put together our numbers, again, as you recall from a few moments ago, the 498, the 111, the 609, and then most importantly, the 40,238. That 40,238 again is when you take 825, which is 110% of our plant capacity of 750, and subtract the 784,000 gallons, which is the 609, added to the 175,301. And so, again, we've had this on our agenda for a couple of months as we've been trying to, to map out our sewer reality. I, I think, I'm not sure if we have, we have clarity, I think, more on our sewer capacity. I'm not sure if we have any more clarity on this item. I will kind of defer to the board on how, how clear you are or how confident you are to make a decision on granting allocation to Mosaic and Northwood MUPD. I know that they, the petitioner will take as much as we were willing to give. I think that's, that's obvious when they ask for functionally the remainder of our capacity, knowing they need 300,000 gallons. But I think after talking with Mr. Bradley, and again, he's been, he's been very good to work with and very patient, allowing us to kind of work through these numbers. Is the, the two items burning hottest to them are the, the hotel, which is 16,000 gallons a day, as well as the Lowe's Food Center and then the fuel station for the Lowe's Foods. And I shudder to 100% Bradley on, on his behalf, because I am no agent of, of him or the partnership. But after conversations with him, I understand that is kind of the ones burning most. So according to my math, the Lowe's Foods takes 6610, the gas station is an additional 500, again, 16,000 for the hotel, which is 23,110. I know they will take as much as we were, are willing to give. So I will kind of open up the conversation that, you know, we have 40,238 if we stick with our 110% policy. And that Mosaic and Northwood would like to have as much as possible, but probably they will take as, as little in theory. I mean, if we say no, then they take nothing, but they, they, they would probably work with an amount as little as 23,110.
Chris, in the, I think memo perhaps from September, there was, you know, mention of trying to divvy it up in such a way that from that 40,000, the town retained, you know, enough for some projects, not the least of which is the town hall project.
Right.
Which I, I agree. Yeah, we should, we should be able to do that. I'm wondering, do you have a feel for what that number is? How much should we retain? I mean, if we were to provide the 23110, you know, we'd be keeping 17, thereabouts.
Right.
And I think the estimate for the town hall was something like 2,000. Yeah, John, you remember? Yeah.
That, that's correct. We, we were looking at around 2,000 for town hall. I think there was going to be a comfort level of saying that you keep it at about five. That would be no worse than that. Because that would, I think comfortably fit us in the realm of town hall and also project here or there. Again, the last thing that I think myself and the board would like to do is, you know, we have the sewer request for someone who comes up with a single family home. Someone who, again, developers are pretty savvy to this stuff. They understand sewer capacities. It's the person who unbeknownst to them, we've been going through this trial and tribulation or whatever you want to call it that. And they bought a lot and they want to go build a home. They secure everything to go do it and they realize they don't have capacity.
Right.
And so I, I think it would be prudent for us to have a decent threshold. So we, again, we don't want anybody to abuse that and say, oh, I'm in there and I didn't know about it. And yet they want to do a five lot subdivision. They should probably know that. But for the one off homes, I, I think we need to have some sort of buffer there. I also think that it would be prudent to have stuff for our downtown. There's a lot of projects, Soco in particular, that is a very prominent project. Not just because downtown is such an important piece, but because we have DOT money going into projects. That it's more than just private development. It's, it's, it's town money. It's DOT money. It's private money all coming together for that circle project. And I know Mr. Stafford has, I've been working with him and his consultants. I'm trying to figure out what the net effect of what that Soco project would be. It appears to be about 7,500 gallons. And I think that's a project that is kind of got an asterisk that's a little bit different than most projects. I think every developer who has a project approved or wants to have it approved thinks their project's the most important. And that's where this board's going to have some, some tough decisions about determining what's, what's the priority. And because your allocation is, is somewhat emblematic of, of what the priorities are. Some of it's just first come, first served. You're at the deli and you took a number first and you got, you got sewer. Some of it is, hey, we're getting thin and we really want to see this project get done. And I'm, the town's not trying to pick losers, but we, we need to maybe prioritize a project over another. So I think if we were to grant the allocation at the 23,110 for, for the, for Mosaics, for the hotel, and that's been a big project that I've heard this board talk about. It's important for the town to have that hotel go up. We've also had conversations about the importance of additional grocery stores and that, and the services those provide. I think those are, are defensible things to approve. Again, the petitioner is going to want you to approve as much as possible. But if we had a remnant amount of 17,000, I think that would give us enough if we were to reserve that for town hall. And I'll say probably the downtown area for the foreseeable future to pick up the projects that we'd like to see around our downtown.
Yeah. I, I think, I, I really appreciate the points you're making about the investments that we've already been setting about. And I'm mindful of this board's, at least in my short tenure, four years of investing in the Main Street program. And I think we're all, I, I think I've heard every single member of this board express concern about the keeping downtown vital, keeping it vibrant and attractive. And we have put our money where our mouth is with those investments in the Main Street program and in other ways as well, the Circle Project and the events that we do downtown. So yeah, I, I mean, just off on the back of an envelope, I think I got over $150,000 that I've seen sent in the direction of downtown. And, and so I, I think you're spot on, Chris, to recognize that we probably would want to think about a remnant, as you said, and how it might be allocated to important projects in downtown. So I appreciate Commissioner Fiocco's questions regarding kind of the, the bare minimum that our, our friends with Mosaic and Northwood projects could make use of in the very near future. And then I'm also mindful of the presentation you gave a few minutes ago that we will have a little bit of leeway coming in six months or so.
Me? Further thoughts or discussions?
I think it'd be good to know as well. So last, last December, I guess, we allocated 48,000 gallons for specific lots, I believe, in, in Mosaic. And I think, you know, next, next up is reallocation of some of that to a different lot within Mosaic. And some of those are noted as retail and restaurants and things like that. So I think, I think it'd be good to see what is left of that and what is, you know, how that represents the current plans. And I think that the timeline of how that might line up with, you know, for example, some of the other things that we're talking about that would increase capacity. I, I know now the, the hotel and the grocery store are immediate needs and I, and I really agree with those. But I would want to see if all of these other remaining 47,000 gallons are immediate needs as well.
And, and for the rest of the board, what Mr. Ship's referring to is, is part of the request under new business number one, which is the Mosaic Cruisers project, Mr. Bradley sent me a letter last week pertaining to this. And as, as Mr. Ship responded, they were given an allocation of 47,950 gallons per day last year. The Mosaic Cruisers requires 2,940 gallons of sewer. And so Mr. Bradley has, in order to, as, as you may recall from our policy, that if you get a site plan approval, you have to have a sewer allocation to go with that. And basically he has just displaced some of that 47,950 to account for that Mosaic Cruisers to allow it to proceed forward with site plan review approval. So I think to Mr. Ship's comment there, it's how much of, of that 47,950, which is now 45,000, 010, would be available for some of these other projects as well, if I understand correctly.
Yeah, exactly. And, and I guess we can hit this in the next one, but I'm not exactly sure what that reallocation does. If, if the original allocation was, was a bucket with a table, you know, potentially describing it, or if it was specifically described to those, those uses. So that might be a thing to hit later, but it, it's really, it's obviously unfortunate situation we're in when we're, you know, all grasping at the last, last straws in, in the barrel for now. But I think if we, if we all do that, then, then it can help everybody time their projects and approvals going forward.
My understanding that that 47 amongst the various projects they've got under construction or soon to start is, has been kind of dedicated towards those projects. So that the 23, I think 110 would be on top of that number for the, the two projects, right? The hotel and the grocery store.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding as well. And I just wonder about the current state. I mean, I think even unfortunately with, with COVID going on now, there's five restaurants listed here of 120 to 150 seats. And so, you know, for example, I wonder if those are still on track to, to build as quickly as we might have imagined previously.
Fair question.
Any further questions?
No, but I, I appreciate the calculation of the numbers and I'd be willing to make a motion to approve 23110 this evening.
Motion to approve the 23110? Is there a second?
Second.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. Unanimous? Thank you.
Just one related note too. I think it might be appropriate to look at our, our allocation policy going forward for that remaining 17,000. We, we talked about, you know, our existing policy, if it needs to be tuned up essentially for that last remaining 17,000 with the, some of the things we talked about of projects downtown or single family homes, things like that. Just to make it clear for everybody who is, who is submitting that we have a, a policy and it's not something we decide case by case.
Okay. Alright. Okay, well, the next item on the agenda then is new business number one, which is site plan review for Mosaic Cruisers and Homes. Not sure who's presenting here.
Yes, that's me. Let me pull my screen up.
Very festive tonight, Kaylee.
Yes, I decided to get, get it done early. Alright, can everybody see?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, okay. So Cruisers is being presented to the board as a site plan for review and decision. The proposal is to construct a 5,000 square foot convenience store with five fuel NPDs in the Mosaic development. This shows the approved site layout for phase one of Mosaic. Cruisers will be on lot 13, which is right here. This use requires 25 parking spaces. The applicant will be providing 32. The structure would connect to town utilities. As of November 22nd, sewer has not been allocated for this use. Mosaic was granted 47,950 gallons per day for phase 1A by the Board of Commissioners on December 9th, 2019. Mosaic is requesting a reallocation of 2,940 gallons per day from their allocated 47,950 to be used for the proposed Mosaic Cruisers on lot 13. The plans have been reviewed in accordance with the town's relevant development ordinances and by the appropriate department. Staff recommends approval of the proposed request. At the November 2nd Planning Board, the site plan was found to be satisfactory in a vote of six to zero with the board recommending approval. The required action is to make a motion on the site plan. And please note that the applicant and engineer are here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kaylee or the applicant? Or discussion items?
Where does the storm water get treated for this property?
The storm water is covered under the, the main pump, main wet pond that's on the east side of the site.
Oh, so it goes, it makes it all the way over there, huh?
It does, yes, sir.
Wow, okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Motion to approve. Just a quick, a quick question. Mr. Holmes, I appreciate the conversations that we've had in the past about refueling electric vehicles. And I'm remembering that this site has, maybe Mr. Ashness can help clarify. The overall Mosaic project has electric vehicle charging infrastructure to the east of this Cruisers, I believe, or is it to the northeast? And approximately how far?
It's to the, it's to the southeast, John. If you, if you look at the plan that, that Kaylee has up, you'll see, go back to that last one, Kaylee. You'll see EV to the right, kind of in a bottom.
I see it. Yep. Thank you for reminding us.
Yes, sir.
That's good, easy walking distance to your new convenience store, Mr. Holmes. Thank you.
Let's see, I think we had a motion on the floor.
We did.
To approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay, the final action is amendment to Chatham Park Plan Development District Master Plan. And Chris, are you presenting on this or?
I'm gonna start.
Okay.
We'll see, we'll see where the conversation takes us. I may need, this is a Mr. Jones and Mr. Messick as we, as we go through it. And I appreciate everyone's attention to this matter. As, as those who are following the agenda realize this got pulled from the consent agenda number six and it moved to new business number two. What we have before us is a request to amend the, the Chatham Park Master Plan. And if you, if you look at section ten point three, you'll see there in italics, there is a, there's a five and a fifteen percent requirement as you look at Chatham Park. Five percent of the total units, there's twenty two thousand units, residential units planned, five percent of that is eleven hundred. There's a requirement that until all the additional elements, which are, there are twelve elements that are, that are required. The only lacking element that the Chatham Park has yet to satisfy is the affordable housing element. They, it also requires that there's a development agreement in place in order for them to exceed that five percent threshold. There's also the fifteen percent requirement as it pertains to the commercial square footage requirements. We are, we, as in, the request has not been made to me. And I, I think it's fine to leave it alone at this time with the, with the non-residential of leaving that fifteen percent unchanged. The, the requirement, and again, it's, it's really just a, a, a reaction to them running out of lots to submit to the town. They've been working on the development agreement. Mr. Messick and myself have been involved in that project. It predates me. Certainly does not predate Mr. Messick. As far as I know, it doesn't predict Mr. Messick. He's been here for quite a while. If it's been that long, I can't help you on that one, but we've been working towards the development. What was that?
Said you weren't even born yet.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. The, but the development agreement I think is coming along. We've been working with that with the small area plan, which has been somewhat conjoined to the development agreement. Chatham Park feels like that, that it's submitted to the town. We're waiting for, excuse my dog playing with a dinosaur sweet toy. Hold on, let me, let me grab him real quick. All right, he ran away from me, so maybe he'll stay in the bedroom. But the, so with the development agreement, it's submitted. We anticipate we'll have that in front of the board in the, in the next probably sixty days. There's still some items to attend to with that. Again, the small area plan has been somewhat conjoined to that. The smaller area plan has been submitted. That was submitted in September of twenty twenty. So about twenty, about two months ago. Our planning department did submit some requests back to Chatham Park to attend to those items. Mr. Jones is, is probably the, the, the local expert on that about where they stand with that one. In terms of number of units submitted, again, the requirement that was vetted in twenty fifteen as part of the master plan was lots submitted for site plan or preliminary plan approval. And so basically it did not take to the books in a final plan. It was simply just submitted for review. Chatham Park is just under one thousand lots submitted to date. So they are just over one hundred lots to go. Obviously, they, they are nearing that threshold, which has made this a more burning desire to have this amendment conducted or approved. The requirement and the, and the reason was on consent agenda to start with. And obviously I've, I try to have a good pulse of what the board or what certain controversial issues may be. And lacking really a lot of clear guidance about what the policy may or may not be. As you'll see in our ordinance five point eight point ten, there are requirements that require the rehearing or basically a public process for amending a master plan. And there are those that are not. This amendment request does not trigger any of those requirements. So technically the town manager is authorized to amend it. I'll say somewhat unilaterally. That I do not need board consent to amend that. Now, and I'll, I'll break from more professional. I am no dummy. I serve at the pleasure of a board that probably very much cares about this policy. So despite the fact that I have the ability to do it, doesn't mean that I'm going to do it. And so that's why I wanted to bring it at least in front of the board at the consent agenda. I do want to be respectful of, and, and obviously we're gonna have some conversation tonight about it, but I do want to be respectful of the applicant because they're not required to have a process on it. So it's kind of a, an awkward thing for me to try to navigate the requests, be diligent on both sides. My customers, as y'all know, are both developers and our citizenry. So when I look at the customer base at large and say, how do I best serve the public in my capacity? That's, that's was my attempt to put this on the consent agenda, knowing that it can very well be pulled and moved to a discussion item. So again, the basic premise is to change the language from the five percent from submitted to final platted. Now, the the reality of that would be is that provides them more time. It takes longer to final plat a lot than it does to submit it for original plan approval. The quote unquote, the slippery slope with that is, is not knowing how many lots would be submitted before they would have the one hundred, the eleven hundred lots platted. And that's really where the perceived risk would be is if we say, okay, well, they don't have eleven hundred lots planted. We don't have a development agreement in place. We don't have the smaller area plan in place, which has been going into development agreement. Do they submit for five thousand lots? We approve those and we haven't got to eleven hundred planted yet. That's really the, you know, kind of the worst case scenario if you want to apply that type of nomenclature to it. So again, there, I really don't have a lot of heartburn about the final platted language. But I do, I, I very much would appreciate your input, your guidance, any other conversation we'd have on it as we go about it. As you'll read somewhat in the memo, they've submitted development agreement. We've yet to call a public hearing and actually discuss it. We can do that in the next sixty days. I, I feel confident in that. But affordable housing side of it, which is the last element, is a more tricky problem. And as we've talked about a lot with the board over some emails and, and just in general, but with the affordable housing, we have a desire to have that inclusionary zoning ordinance of some form. You know, I think we've all wanted to have more of a care base policy. But until something's put in place, I think Chatham Park is reluctant. And I think it's, this board has shared with them in the past, and, and please correct me if I'm misunderstanding this, that in, any attempt for them to submit for their final element, which is affordable housing, will be unsuccessful until we have our policy in place. Because if we don't have the base policy, they don't know how to be exceptional to that. Again, that could be incorrectly interpreted, both on my part and their part. That they could certainly submit something, but I think that is the general understanding is that until we have our ordinance in place, they are, and again, I, I hate to be in a position where I feel like I'm representing them with their understanding because I, I don't know how they fully comprehend any conversations that have been had. I'm interpreting conversation from, from conversations I've had with y'all as well as conversations I've had with them, molding the two together and creating my own opinion in, and hopefully a very respectful way to both sides that I perceive that's, that's the scenario is that they feel like that it's a self fulfilling prophecy is that if we don't have an ordinance, they can never fulfill the requirement and we descend in this cyclical circular situation where it can never be attended to. So I, I think that's part of the conversation that's been had today and I, I very much welcome all feedback and opinions tonight as we consider this, be it tonight, be it future meetings as we go forward with this. And hopefully it's all moot in the very near future anyway, where we have a development agreement in place, the affordable housing element is satisfied and everybody's all happy and we're moving forward.
Well, it's not necessarily so that we would have an affordable housing ordinance and all of a sudden their additional element will be satisfied. That assumes something not decided yet. That is whether or not Chatham Park and the portable hadn't orange are one and the same.
And, and I don't, I don't think they, they, again, I, I don't want to represent them. The way I've interpreted conversations is that they do not perceive that they will be held to the baseline standard. I think they very much understand that we've, we've looked at Chatham Park as exemplary in always in every one of the elements that's been done. I think they understand that they will be held to a higher standard than whatever our baseline is. I just think that it's created some uncertainty about what exemplary of nothing so far is, if that makes sense.
Well, I will have to say that in two thousand and fifteen, when the master plan was approved with the elements in it, there was no, and there still is no affordable housing program. So it was aspirational. So anything that they were to propose would be exceptional because when you compare it to nothing, that can be exceptional. And, you know, we looked to them to bring their planning expertise to the table to help us with this complex issue. Now Jim, Pam and I have served on that task force and as we worked through the many difficulties of this topic, I think it is multifaceted and probably we would benefit from an affordable housing program and ordinance in Chatham Park that has some relation to the town. Whether that ordinance is the same, but I think as we move forward and we look at management of thirty, thirty year obligations that, you know, there probably needs to be some kind of agency, housing trust authority or something that is probably five oh one C three based and maybe town staff based. So I think there is an interplay between the two, but I think they have an affordable housing obligation regardless of the town's program. And I recall hearing some time ago and, and I've confirmed that with another member of the Affordable Housing Task Force this evening, I confirmed that there was a meeting maybe a year, year and a half ago where representatives of Chatham Park Investors at the Affordable Task Force meeting had talked about drafting their own language based on what the task force had come up with. So it's never been my understanding that this board codified or in any way affirmed that they had, they had to wait on us. It has long been my understanding that they wanted to do that, but I've, I've spoken up in public, former mayor did, encouraging them to not wait. So that, that may be their understanding that they cannot satisfy it until we take action, but I think that that's their interpretation of, of circumstances, not anything formal.
And I, I think that all that's fair, certainly. And, and perhaps maybe this conversation is a prompt to get that kick started. I know Mr. Smith with Preston is on the call. And again, and, and I'm sure that maybe others listening in from Chatham Park. There's Chuck. He just clicked on the screen. But I, I think maybe, maybe having that reiterated to have the understanding of what that is. I think it's similar, it's similar conversation what we had with, with Mr. Dupree with Rexford Landing. You know, there was an affordable housing component with that. When planning staff and myself met with Mr. Dupree, I, I went over with him about, you know, the dollars and cents that we were talking about for that fee in lieu of for affordable housing components. And I told him, I said, Ford, you may come out golden on this because when we get a policy in place, you find out that you saved a bunch of money from not having to do these types of things. Or you may come out and go, geez, man, I got, I got ringed on that. You know, if I had waited a year, maybe the policy would have been much less significant. And so I, I think there's, it, it's inherently advantageous and disadvantageous at the same time to try to approach a policy when the town doesn't have a baseline policy in itself. And so I think the, again, and Chuck's on the call, so he could, he can chime in if he would like. But the, I think the fear and the conversations that I've had with Chatham Park is that sure, if you have a hundred and ninety two acres for a hundred and sixteen units, you can, you can have what Ford Dupree did, but when you extrapolate that over twenty two thousand units and seven thousand acres, what, what is considered to be exemplary? Is a, is a dollar for dollar ratio prorated out gonna be considered simple and not exemplary? And we want it to be more money? Or is it saying the magnitude of the development is such that anywhere close to similar, even fifty cents on the dollar to what Mr. Dupree paid would be exemplary in its effect? And so I think that's, I know that's some of the conversation I've had with Mr. Rawl, but we're all about it is, okay, the town has, has jumped into this affordable housing. We've got the most recent example being Rexford Landing. How does that extrapolate over the macro development that is Chatham Park? And so I think that's where being able to hang your hat a little bit on the town's baseline policy and then saying, hey, we're a hundred and twenty percent of that policy. There's a little more guidance for policies enacted versus not having any guidance whatsoever. And again, that's my interpretation, trying to understand both sides of it.
Chris, what's the practical effect of the amendment?
Well, the practical effect is that it, it, it takes a little bit of pressure off of other things. Again, if, if the town feels that, hey, we're waiting on Chatham Park, you know, for affordable housing, you know, as simple as that. Whether we have an ordinance in place, then, then the amendment has no real effect. It just, it just probably prolongs their need to submit that. As in, it, it probably buys them a year. If we're going from submitted lots, which we're, we're bumping up against very soon, probably one submitted away from having that be bumped up against versus if you go to the final platted versus if you go to the final platted or kind of a final approved, if it's a, a multifamily product, then you're probably buying a year to put something together if you're Chatham Park. If you're, um, because again, we're not touching non-residential, so it's really just kind of the final plat. I, I think that's probably the reality is that you just, otherwise you force the hand and say, no, submit sooner than later. We want to see what your element is and we'll get the development agreement on the books and we'll, we'll have that processed. I think, I do think that if we do not take any action on it whatsoever, and we say, no, the, the master plan is written like it is, and we take the hard line stance, there will be a push to get everything else approved as soon as possible. Um, and then, then the, then the ball is in Chatham Park's court to get us an affordable housing element. Um, and if that's in, in advance of us having a policy, then we have to kind of have that conversation and, and negotiation back and forth of what's exemplary if we don't have a standard in place.
So it does. And I think it also takes, um, a, what appears to be a relatively successful operation that's gaining momentum. It kind of puts a damper on that. And honestly, it's not really the kind of thing you want to do uh, when there is growth occurring and looking to grow upon itself. So I think it is twofold. And I, and I have read lots of emails that express the risk profile that you expressed, Chris, earlier. And while I do think it's a theoretical, theoretical risk, I don't think it's a real practical risk, um, that it would get out of shape. And when I think of the goals that I understand is to keep momentum going and to allow a little bit more time for a more contemplate, contemplative, um, approach to affordable housing, one in which the town's role is somewhat defined. I, I think I can propose a simpler way to amend the language without, um, causing fear in those who feel as though a theoretical risk is a real risk. Early in the project, in two thousand and fourteen and fifteen, when discussions were ongoing with, uh, Chatham Park about, um, all the elements and, and you know, we can't forget that it was really, they were still active when lots and lots of, um, businesses and developers were feeling the effects of a really severe recession. And the town was really looking for economic development and Chatham Park was still able, had the wherewithal to come to the table. Uh, and we wanted to give them the ability to move forward with certain things, even though perhaps the master plan wasn't as complete as we wanted. And that's where this additional elements came from. And as a check and a balance in the system, it was established, these thresholds of five and fifteen percent. I recall a time when the notion was fifteen percent and fifteen percent. Uh, ultimately it was codified as five and fifteen, and I think that was voluntary from the developer, from Chatham Park to go to five percent. So I would propose that, um, in order to keep the momentum going by the time that we want for this more robust idea for affordable housing conversation is change the language from five percent to eight percent. Keep the same governor on associated with site plan review, not final plat. Because for those who feel as though you could continue to submit site plans after this language change to final plat, that eliminates that. It simply adds, I don't know, six hundred units to the eleven hundred unit, um, order. So that still leaves ninety-two percent of all the residential units yet to be able to be developed without completion of the elements, without completion of the development plan or the development agreement and the small area plan.
Yeah. So for, for math sake, that'll take it, that eight percent would take it to seventeen sixty.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So a little over six hundred, right, six sixty.
Six hundred and sixty more units to be submitted.
Yeah.
Which again, which in, in the grand scheme of things, when you're looking for reducing that pressure valve a little bit to say, hey, we, we all thought we'd be ahead of this schedule. You know, on both sides, I think both sides thought that, hey, this is going to get attended to in a couple of years and no big deal. We're five years into it now. Uh, again, Mr. Smith's on the call. And, and he can speak to that more, but I think that's a, that's a, in my opinion, that's a reasonable minimum ground. Cause, cause again, I think one of the consequences of this is when you, when you stall the development, be it this one or any development, there's carrying costs. And there's, there's costs that aren't realized that when, when you ask for affordable housing, when you ask for parks, when you ask for these other things, the more that the, the development is stagnated, the less money that they have to provide the things that we like to see from an amenity perspective. Um, and so I think, um, us being able to avoid stagnation is a positive thing, regardless of how you fall on the spectrum of whether you think we should hold a hard line with this or not. I think from a general sense, avoiding that, avoiding unnecessary cost, because again, it, it allows us to potentially ask for more, or I'll use the technical term of exacting more with other, other ventures and other measures that, that will allow us to be more successful in the long term if we can avoid some stagnation.
I think too, the, the eight percent would give time, uh, necessary time to actually do a, a good job on, on both sides on that affordable housing element. And at the same time, not push that so far out to the future. I think it's a, uh, um, I personally think it's a, a, an excellent compromise. And I think badly needed.
May I speak as the plan director? Um, because I would like to have, the original proposal, I would have liked to have given you all an analysis of that and how that is impactful to staff. Um, we are the folks who are reviewing plans that don't necessarily have standards or ordinances to review against. So it's difficult for us to, to review these plans. Uh, Teresa just is reviewing a, a subdivision. And we're on second review of that subdivision and we have ten pages of comments because we don't have standards. We don't have ordinances, um, that the small area plan and or development agreement and or the completion of the elements will have for us, will help us. And it's, and it's on both sides. Uh, their engineers would, would love to have standards or a street cross section to pull from. We're having to make it up. We're, 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 we're struggling. So the original proposal concerned me. Um, the proposal to add six hundred and sixty units to the overall, um, total for them to go to eight percent. I think that's, that's reasonable. Um, and it, and it keeps the project moving along. The, we'll be receiving the newest, uh, small area plan tomorrow. I will review that for completeness. So I submitted comments to Chatham Park a few months ago, a couple of months ago, and it's taken till this time for them to respond to essentially three comments that I had. Um, we'll review that and then in a timely fashion, we will get that in front of the public for a public meeting. I'm not sure how that will look in COVID times, but we will try our best. And then it'll be before you all for, um, for review and, uh, discussion with the app and then ultimately approval. Uh, Chris is correct that in the past I have pushed for the small area plan to be either submitted with or approved prior to the development agreement. I believe that's, I believe that's consistent with state law. Um, I've, we'll probably be challenged on that, but I believe you have to have detailed plans to go along with development agreements. That's my professional opinion. But I would, I, I haven't been asked to give, give an analysis on the amendment. Um, I think it would be impactful for staff and if you wanted me to, to provide an analysis, I could do that.
Well, based on what I just heard, Jeff, if you will allow me to speak, Mr. Mayor. Um, based on at least what I've heard, a few people say, I mean, we are willing to revise a request to the eight percent. Uh, if that seems to be the compromise.
And I'll make a motion to make that, uh, adjustment. So it's a pretty simple amendment to change the five to an eight.
Okay. Motion on the floor, change the five to an eight and, uh, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Mayor, before, before we vote, I just want to clarify, Mr. Pioco for his motion.
Yeah.
That, um, consistent with the ordinance that basically the, the board is authorizing the language to allow me to amend it. If that makes sense.
The motion is to allow you to amend it from five percent to eight percent.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. That is my intent.
The motion should, the, the motion should include the typographical error too.
Thank you, Mr. Messick. That, instead of, instead of, instead of referencing subsection P, we're going to reference subsection Q.
Okay.
Got to keep your Ps and your Qs straight.
You gotta do it.
We've been waiting hundreds of years to have that line up.
Yes, we do have a, we do have a motion and a second from Commissioner Baldwin. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Biogo, Ship, Baldwin. I, person, Jay? Aye, unanimous then. Okay.
Yes.
Can I make a comment since we've already voted? I like to say also, we all need to move forward with, uh, trying to get this affordable housing ordinance done. So that way we don't come up against this again. So if the town could move forward with that and as well as Chatham Park move forward with some ideas on that so that we can uh, go on and get these things in place, maybe we can have a work session or something. Because I know that we have submitted it. That I think the planning department is reviewing all the information that the Affordable Housing Task Force had done and going to try to place it, put it into an ordinance form. So if we could go on and move as quickly as we possibly can to go on and get that ordinance done, I think that could help a lot of things along.
And Ms. Baldwin, I, I agree. I think we've actually had some progress, believe it or not, depending on on how positive and optimistic you want to be with some of the email changes. I, I do think I, I've received at least, I feel like more clarity on the findings of the Affordable, uh, Housing Task Force and kind of, um, the board's confidence and taking some of their um, uh, report and, and their deliverables and folding that to the ordinance. It seemed like to me, at least when I first got here, that it was less clear whether those were going to be realized or not. Um, but I think the commentary from the board, and again, speak now if, if I'm incorrect, seems to be like that we have more confidence in that than maybe I perceived and that, and perhaps that's my, um, miscalculation of what, what was going on, um, in my early tenure here. Um, now that I'm seasoned after three months, I've, I've hopefully been more attentive to it. But I, I think what we can do from a staff perspective is try to get something better into form. Um, I originally thought we were going to have to have, um, uh, more of a conversation to scope it. After the email change we've had recently, I think we're closer than we may think. And I think it's probably on staff, uh, to draft something for your consideration to, to make that conversation where we do have it more targeted.
Right. And even if that, even if that draft, you know, is a discussion item that need, needs, uh, to go back and refinement and that sort of thing, but I fully concur with Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin that it's time we, we really do have to get this done and, uh, I, I, I think that that's very, very important. And I know it's, I, I, I know it's important to Chatham Park as well. I mean, it's not like they've been sitting there with their heels dug in because that hasn't been the case. Uh, they've been a part, partial and have provided, uh, significant contributions to the task force that, and the recommendations that came forward out of that task force that were accepted by the board. So, uh,
And if I may say, it, it, it was our understanding and we were asked to hold off on our proposal until the town was further along in their development of an ordinance. If I'm incorrect in that, I mean, if we're incorrect in our understanding, then I'll accept that. But that's, that's what we understand the, the case to be.
Okay. I, I think you're right, but it, it was a, an agreement rather than a, the codification. Um, so we appreciate you going by that, uh, certainly. And, and I would just ask Chris, is that, is that something we could talk about bullet points on in the December meeting or? A special meeting in December?
I think, I think we could, we could handle it very much the way we did the sewer mapping today. I don't think it's, since, if it's already been scoped, I, I think going over a language is not too cumbersome. If, if you're kind of having the, the conversation of what are we doing? Where do we go? I don't know. We have this and this and that. That's where I would say the, the special meeting is most effective. If we have an ordinance to review, I think that works just as well as having a miscellaneous item on, on a regular meeting. And us looking at that, um, I, I just wrote a note down to myself to try to have something together for that December fourteenth meeting. Um, so we can have something to discuss. Again, even a fifty percent ordinance is helpful.
Yes.
For all, all interested parties, um, you know, I, having just something into form to, to critique and nitpick is beneficial. Um, so I'll work with Mr. Messick. I'm, I'm going to volunteer him to help me. Um, and, uh, we'll, we'll try to get something together. We'll obviously work with planning staff. And, and, and get their thoughts on it as well and, and try to get the board something, um, a- at least to nitpick in December. Again, maybe it'll be, maybe the first iteration will be great and maybe it'll be terrible, but at least we'll, we'll have progress.
Yes. And, uh, uh, speaking for, uh, probably out of turn, but for I said, or the task force, any assistance we can provide on what was meant by this or what that approach looked like or any of those things, I'm sure we all be glad to supply whatever information we can to you.
No, that's very much appreciated as well. I don't, I don't intend to be ignorant to previous efforts. I think we, we need to, to expand upon that. And if, if there's something that lacks context or clarity, um, I'll, I'll reach out if I can find who that person was or, or generically and say, hey, anybody got any hints on this one? Uh, where this may be derived from, I'll be happy to do that as well. So I, I appreciate that in advance.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else then on this topic? I think we're done. Any final comments from the commissioners?
Uh, just, just one, uh, we also, I think we all got an email too about, uh, traffic and on Thompson Street and pedestrian crossings there. Um, and then I know recently too, I've got some, uh, emails from people in Powell Place about traffic and speed in there. I, I know we have the traffic calming policy, but, um, you know, the, kind of the feedback from Powell Place is that it's difficult to get the quantity of signatures required for that. And Thompson Street, I'm not sure how we would handle, um, or, or if we can handle Thompson Street. If that's a town road, so, um, I really, I'm just looking for some guidance on how we can best direct people with these concerns. Um, if they don't necessarily fall into the traffic calming policy that we have.
So one of the things towards this effort, I mean, and it's. I will say from municipal, municipal operation, getting calls about speed is a daily occurrence. I, I don't care where you're at, what the road may be, there's always someone who has got a concern for it. And I'm not, I don't say that as it's frivolous or unjustified. Um, it's just a very common thing. Um, I've been, um, had some conversations with, uh, Chief Johnson, uh, Police Chief. And we, we've talked about. Acquiring more, uh, kind of our speed study information. I know in my experience, when there's a perception of speed, very, very rarely is there actually a speed issue. There are certainly some that are justified again, but you typically look at the eighty-eighth percentile. And generally what you'll find is you put a black box up, even if you don't display the number. And there'll be some hot rodding teenager who was probably me back in the day, who says, let me see how high I can get that thing. And you'll get a seventy and a thirty-five and be like, holy smokes. But the vast majority, the eighty-eighth percentile will be like nineteen and a thirty-five. And so that'll be emblematic if there is no speed issue, kind of a, a few and far between. If you have a speed issue, you can look at, you know, different measures. Do you narrow the road? Basically conflict creates a reduced speed. Whenever you feel like you can't drive as fast, you'll slow down. On street parking creates conflict and it reduces speed. You know, obviously our traffic calming policy with speed tables and things of that nature does. If we have true conflict problems, which I suspect is. Really the, the majority of the conversation about Thompson Street, it's speed is obviously present. Um, but I, I read that email was more conflict based, which is where you would look at stop signs. Stop sign or stop control measures, if you follow the, the MUTCD, which is the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices. That's the guidance that you'll get from, from the highway votes, DOT in particular. You know, it tells you how to, how to install signs, where to put them, where not to put them. Um, is that speed is not to be regulated with stop control devices. Conflict is though. And so if we have perceived conflict, again, on Tom Street, you have a sidewalk that has no. Buffer area between the back of curb and the, and the pedestrian way. You know, if you had a, 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 a three to five foot planning strip, it'd be a much different feeling on that road if you're walking on the sidewalk. I, I mean, and, and if you want to play dump truck bingo, you'd have your field day in, in Pittsburgh. And so I get that on a narrow road, it's probably twenty feet tops, um, in terms of its surface. With dump trucks going either direction, um, it is, it is, um, perceived to have some conflict. So. I'll be working with Chief Johnson on that, looking at that one. Uh, I think Powell Place is a little more complicated. Because the roadway is, 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 is there for them to have that. It's also very much local traffic. Because as we talked about earlier and, and Mr. Bonnet's comment of it's one way in and out. I know very few people that travel to Powell Place just to hang out. Um, and not, not, not go to anybody's home, that they just go there to, to frequent the cul-de-sac. So you're dealing with HOA derived speed concerns. And so that's a little bit of a different problem. But it's still a public issue that we have to deal with. And certainly. We don't intend to hire enough officers to have someone in every single cul-de-sac, um, regulating speed. So we need to look at how we. How we look at that. So at the same time where you have requests in Powell Place in particular. To put no parking signs because the road gets too tight. When you, when you put the no parking signs up, you then get calls because people are driving too fast.
Yeah.
So i- it's really a moving target. So at, at the end of the day, I hope that some of the speed infrastructure that we're gonna. Hopefully acquire with the police department. Again, we're looking at some of the costs on that. We, we don't want to spend a tremendous amount of money, but again. Maybe a few thousand dollars to, to properly study this. So when someone comes to us that we can say, hey, we took your comment seriously. We did a two week analysis, you know, we didn't just do it when. In a normal world, you would do it when schools in, not when it's out. Now, school's never in, so. Y- y- your, your numbers are skewed, but you try to find a realistic timeframe. And figure out, okay, are we having speed issues at peak travel? Are we having them at random times? Because if you, if you pick up and you have a speed problem at two AM, that's a very different scenario than if your speed problem's at eight AM. And us being able to collect that data, be responsive to that data, I think will fill in some of the gaps. That maybe the traffic calming policy lacks right now. So again, it's, it's us getting more. Savvy or professional with our process and, and just saying, hey, we've got policy in place, but there's always going to be a gray area and a gap. How can, how can we mend those gaps? While understanding that, that sometimes there just isn't a problem that we can address. And sometimes it very much is, and how do we address it if it doesn't meet the traffic calming policy?
That's great. Thank you. I appreciate your obvious attention to that already.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other final comments from? Any of the commissioners? Commissioner Bonnet?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so Mr. Kennedy, um, as, uh, the coronavirus numbers increase. And, uh, as, as that, uh, statistical likelihood encroaches upon all of our lives. More profoundly. I am. Eager to hear from you. Uh, I don't want to put more on you because frankly have so much on you already. But I am eager to hear from you how we can become more, uh, mindful. More, uh, more careful and perhaps more aggressive. In, um, our own, uh, participation in, in promotion of good public health. Uh, I'll, I'll kind of leave it vague like that, but I'll toss out some ideas. Uh, I'm wondering if the county health department might work with us to get more frequent testing. For those members of our staff and police who, uh, have more frequent exposures with public. And. Yeah, I, I guess, you know, that's just one idea, but I don't want to put you on the spot. I do want you to think about it if you would please. And, um, and just let us know if there's anything that we can do to. Really up our game because I, I think, um. Things, things could get worse.
Yeah. And, and I, I will say it has been something at the. It's on the stove, you know, it's not on the back burner, but it's not maybe burning hottest until it is. We've, we have had instances of, um, you know, COVID in, in, in the workplace with us. Certainly it's a, it's a scary thing, um, especially with a small, um, employee staff that. You know, again, I don't know if you're Apex and you have five hundred employees, if it's less scary. We don't have that reality. So I don't worry too much about having the five hundred employee problem. But I do know if you, when you have, you know, just a handful of folks in town hall, if it runs its course through there, then we're shut down. I know myself, um, I, I traveled, obviously I, I took a week off and when I got back, I took a COVID test. Um, I felt like that was the appropriate thing to do. I didn't particularly enjoy or desire to have a couple of Q-tips shoved up my nose, but, um, I wanted to protect those around me, both personally and professionally. And, and so fortunately I came back negative. So I, I tried to be respectful and, and, but you never know, you can, you can always feel like you're careful and catch it at the weirdest times. Um, and so we're working on our policies. Um, I would love to say that our policy was. Ironclad and, and in place right now. Um, we do have basic policy in place for it. I would like to make it more robust. I, I've struggled with it, to be quite frank, because the, the guidance shifts so frequently.
Yes.
And, and trying to create a workforce that is. Okay with that policy. You know, be it, hey, if you're exposed, you got to get tested and whether you're feeling the symptoms or not. I mean, it's just. Try, trying to, to sell that to our employees. Uh, to some, it's obvious to some, it's, it's a harder sale. Um, and I'm respectful of both. I don't think either one of them are right or wrong. There's a lot of uncertainty with this whole thing. And so it's just trying to be respectful as much as anything else. So. I appreciate the support. Um, I don't think I really need anything right now per se. But I definitely am appreciative of the, the, the opportunity to ask for support if needed. I, I do think we're, we're creating that kind of family environment with our employees. That we want to make sure that, that we feel respected and cared for as we come to work every day. And so regardless of your opinions about what the best policy for COVID is, I think we're going to have to just. Pick a policy and say, that's what we, we did our best and that's what we tried to do. But again, I appreciate the support as, as we kind of make our policy more robust.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonnet, for bringing that up. Thank you very much. Thank you, uh, Mr. Kennedy. We appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other commissioner comments? Now that I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Hey, thank you all and have everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving and a safe one. And.
Same to everybody.
Yes. In an unofficial capacity, Mayor Noss, I'd like to thank you again for your comments at the, uh, the, from the balcony of the courthouse.
Oh, thank you, John.
During the tree lighting. And, and I really was, uh. Impressed and, and moved and, and I would ask if you're willing to share the written comments publicly, because it looked like you prepared written comments.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
As a letter to the editor or through the Facebook?
I will be glad to do that, John. It's a good idea. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Good idea.
Thank you all, everyone.